The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order, the October 24th meeting of the Cary Town Council. At this time, I'll recognize Mr. Yurha for our ceremonial opening. Mr. Yurha.
Thank you, Mayor. Recently, I had a chance to share a few facts about Cary's population at a Chamber of Commerce event, and I was encouraged at that time to kind of share a few of them with you all during a ceremonial opening. So, here goes. First fact is one I think most of us know, and that is that Cary is the seventh largest municipality in North Carolina. We're a pretty big town. Some of us also know that if we were in South Carolina instead of North Carolina, we would be the largest municipality in the state. Matter of fact, if we were in any of nine different states, we would be the largest municipality, and we would be number two in 12 other states, which means in 21 of the 50 states, almost half of them, Cary would be either number one or two in population. We're a pretty big town. North Carolina has 100 counties. Do you know how many counties Cary is bigger than? Entire counties. Of the 100, Cary is bigger than 82 of the 100 counties. There are only 18 counties in North Carolina bigger than Cary by itself. And speaking of the number 18, and this is the one I really like, there are 18 countries of the world that we're bigger than. Really. I have a list if you want to look at them later. But the important word in all of this is not "big." I think the important word is "town." We're a pretty big town. Just because you reach a certain size doesn't mean that you have to be called a city. We chose to be a town at one time, and we continue to choose to be a town. A town, to me, sounds a lot more neighborly than a city. A town conjures up an image of having a real corner drugstore somewhere in the center of downtown with a real lunch counter. A town conjures up the idea of continuing on a tradition for over 50 years like, let's say, a Band Day. And a town is someplace that has a vision, something like this. A matter of fact, exactly like this, because this is Cary's official town vision. Cary's a place where good neighbors form healthy neighborhoods in a green and vibrant community of friendly, caring people. Green, vibrant, friendly, and caring, that's a town, and that's Cary. So as we look to the future and as we make decisions up here that are needed to get us there, I hope we don't ever lose sight of that vision. I hope we don't ever lose sight of those town qualities, and I hope we don't ever lose sight of what makes Cary Cary, which to me is simply the best big, small town in America. And speaking of America, why don't we all join now in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Yurha. I'll probably want that list a little bit later. I could probably steal some of that and use it in my speech. We're now at Agenda Item A3, which is the adoption of the agenda. I ask council members to approve the following amendments to the agenda. One, remove Public Hearing E2 from this agenda. Staff discovered an advertising error. Staff will re-advertise the public hearing for a future meeting, and that is rezoning 13 RAZ11, which is a Cary Park PDD. Number two, add an item to the consent agenda known as B1D to consider granting an easement to Duke Energy Progress on the town's West Cary Pump Station site. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're now at the consent agenda portion of tonight's meeting, which is Item B. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, we'll take a moment to read the consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all these items. The consent agenda includes minutes, setting public hearings for annexations, approving a tax rate report, and the new item we added, granting an easement to Duke Energy Progress on the town's West Cary Pump Station site. Mr. France will now summarize the Planning and Development Committee consent agenda Cary Band Day means a lot, not only to me, but to many, many people in Cary. items.
Thank you, Mayor. We had two items. The first is New Hope Church Trailhead Master Plan and Community Appearance Manual Standards
It's a great tradition, as Mr. Yurha mentioned, one that's been going on forever and ever,
related to ancillary buildings, and then the management plan and budget for Coke Booth
over 50 years, and it's an exciting time for our residents, and we're honored that
Amphitheater.
Thank you, Mr. France. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items, or do council members want any you do this every year, and it's not an easy thing to do, to put this on every year, and items pulled from consent agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion to approve and a second. they continue to do it, and I'm looking forward to being there and watching not only your Any discussion? exhibition, but Western Carolina. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I remember the last time they came. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. If you ever want to see something that's pretty spectacular as far as a marching band, That moves us to Item C1, the Recognitions Reports and Presentations. go listen to Western Carolina and be ready to start off like this, because they're really And our first item of recognition is the Cary Band Day Proclamation, and it's my pleasure loud. So, I want to invite all of our citizens, everyone watching, everyone in the audience, to invite our Cary High School Band representatives to join me at the podium. please go check out Cary Band Day. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing. And in honor of that day, I'd like to read a proclamation. Recognizing November 2nd, 2013, as the 55th Cary Band Day. Whereas, the Cary High School Band has proven its musical and marching abilities throughout the years by its continuing achievements of both national and regional recognition for its accomplishments, and whereas, members of the Cary High School Band have brought much honor to the Town of Cary and its citizens while also maintaining high scholastic aptitudes. Music plays an increasingly important role in our world today. It is the language of all people and one of the greatest forces in creating peace and harmony. The citizens of Cary are very proud of the Cary High School Band for its many accomplishments throughout the years, which includes being named Bands of America Regional Finalist in 2001, 2003, 2004, 2009, 2010, 2011, and I'm sure will continue as I come back to read this.
2013.
2013, there you go. In 2011, the Cary High School Band was named Grand Champion of Cleveland High School Competition, the Clinton High School Band Day, and was Bands of America Grand National Semi-Finalist, placing them in the top 30 bands competing at Nationals last year. At the 2013 Pinecrest Invitational, the Cary Marching Band won Outstanding Music, General Effort, Color Guard, Percussion, and Drum Measures. Now therefore, I herald Wein Brecht, Mayor of Cary, North Carolina, on behalf of the entire Cary Town Council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 2nd, 2013, as the 55th Cary Band Day, and I urge all of our citizens and surrounding areas to join together in honoring and supporting this longstanding Cary tradition, proclaim this 24th day of October, 2013. And I would invite Mr. Minnick to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Town Council members. We look forward to Cary Band Day. The mayor stole some of my thunder by telling you about Western Carolina, but we also have 36 bands registered as of right now, including several local bands also from Cary and Wake County area, and from, I think we have like, how many bands from Virginia? Seven bands that are coming from Virginia this year. So you'll see 36 bands, as well as the Cary High School Band in exhibition, and as he said, Western Carolina. We had the privilege of seeing them a few weeks ago, and they have close to 400 members in their band and have just a spectacular show that's just one of the more entertaining shows that you'll ever see from a college marching band, and we're hoping for weather just like today, and we look very much forward to it. I would like to briefly introduce, these are our outstanding drum majors this year. This is Kaya Bunting, Ewan Liu, and Lincoln Schleusner, and as well as our chairperson for Cary Band Day for many, many years, Sandra Williams. How many? 25 years. It's had to have been longer than that. That's really crazy. That means, because I've been, this is my 25th year teaching, and so that means that she's been doing that in my first year I went to Cary Band Day, so we've been at it a long time together. So, we thank you for your continued support and hope that everybody can make it out that night.
While the mayor's coming back to the podium, I'd ask Ms. Stevens to meet me down front.
Well, on a more somber note, for six consecutive years, I have had the responsibility of reading this proclamation about Pancreatic Cancer Month. And while I am disappointed to say that the prognosis for pancreatic cancer has not improved greatly over that time, I'm very pleased to say that the strength of advocacy efforts and research directed towards more effective treatments and hopefully a cure continue, thanks to the efforts of people like Ms. Stevens. So, it is my pleasure to read a proclamation designating November 2013 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in Cary. Whereas, this year, an estimated 45,220 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer nationwide, and among them, over 1,150 North Carolinians will die from the disease. As one of the most serious, untreatable, and aggressive forms of cancer, pancreatic cancer is the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States. Within the first year of diagnosis, 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die, and 94% of these patients die within the first five years. Pancreatic cancer can strike any person indiscriminate of age, race, or gender, and although its symptoms are similar to those of many other illnesses, there may be no obvious or visible symptoms at all in the early stages of the disease. When symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is usually too late for an optimistic prognosis, and the average life expectancy of those diagnosed with metastatic disease is only three to six months. The United States Congress passed the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act last year, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop a scientific framework or strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. The Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the first and only national patient advocacy organization that serves the pancreatic cancer community. They focus their efforts on public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments, and finally, a cure for pancreatic cancer. The Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, and they are committed to finding a cure. The good health and well-being of the residents of Cary are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now therefore, I, Gail Adcock, Mayor of the Town of Cary, on behalf of Mayor Wein Brecht and all of my colleagues on the Town Council, do hereby proclaim November 2013 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in Cary. We encourage all citizens to work together to educate themselves and develop a greater understanding of pancreatic cancer and its effects on individuals and families, including families of our own community, proclaim this 24th day of October, 2013. I'd like to give you these proclamations, Ms. Stevens, and invite you to say a few words.
Thank you so much. I want to thank Mayor Wein Brecht.
You hold this.
Okay.
I'll hold it.
And the Cary Town Council for the opportunity to bring awareness to pancreatic cancer. It is among the most lethal of all cancers. It took my own husband within less than three months, and I thank you all so much for your continued support.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens.
Thank you for doing this hard work.
Ms. Stevens, thank you so much for all you did and making everyone aware of this. Thank you, it means a lot. We now move to our third item, this is Item C3, and it's the operational update, and I'll call on Town Manager Shiger, who will present this item. Mr. Shiger.
Thank you, Mayor. I have only one item this evening that I would like to announce. There has already been some announcement on this, but I think it is important for the council as well as our citizens to know that Bill Steis, our Director of Technology Services, for a very long period of time, since I think going back to 1988, perhaps those many years, has been chosen as a winner of the Triangle Business Journal's 2013 CIO Awards. And this award was developed through the Triangle Business Journal, and a panel of judges that they assembled has determined that Mr. Steis has used technology in innovative ways to create competitive advantage, optimize business processes, and enable growth. In the process, it notes that Mr. Steis has set the bar higher for competitors while raising the standards of his profession. This award also came about as a result of the Triangle Business Journal's continued partnership with the North Carolina Technology Association. So over many years, back in the days when there was hardly any technology, when Bill Steis first joined us, he has brought us up, and you see some of the examples of this that we did early on, one of the first cities to use paperless approach to the Town Council, and many other improvements since that time that he has been responsible for in our organization. Mr. Steis was recognized at a special luncheon on October 17th, and on October 18th, the Triangle Business Journal issued or printed an article about the winners of the award. So just to let council know, we're very proud of that, and we appreciate Mr. Steis's work for us in that regard.
I think he's up there in the hall.
I was gonna say, oh, there he is. And I do want to congratulate you, Mr. Steis, on behalf of not only the council but the Town of Cary for all that you and your staff has done. I know you guys work hard in making us one of the best towns in the state, and we really, really appreciate that, and the award is of course well-deserved. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Shiger.
Thank you, Mayor.
We now move to our next item. The next two items, Item Public Speaks Out, Item D, and Regular Public Hearings, Item E, have included instructions for speaking on these forums on the printed agenda. If you'd like to speak at either of these, I would ask that you at this time take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have up to three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic unless it's a public hearing, and it's to your benefit to wait for the public hearings because you get more time. Public hearings are listed on the PowerPoint slide, and I would thank you in advance for holding comments for the public hearings till when we get the public hearings. There's a three-minute time limit, as I said, and to be fair to all our speakers, I'm going to be very strict on that time limit, since there is a one-hour total time limit on Public Speaks Out. There's a timer located on the speaker's podium, which is now highlighted, and when the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds left, and you should start wrapping up your comments. When that expires, the yellow light turns into a flashing red light, and at that time I'll have to interrupt you and ask you to immediately conclude your comments. And I do thank all of our speakers in advance for adhering to our guidelines. I also thank everyone in the audience in advance for respecting that this is a business meeting. We ask that you do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that might distract from the meeting. So at this time, I'm going to open up the Public Speaks Out speaker for anyone who wants to speak on any issue that is not a public hearing, and I would invite the first speaker forward to the podium at this time.
Good evening. My name is Tom Conroy. I live at 109 Cricketry Drive in Cary in the Lockmere West community. I'm here tonight to bring to your attention a problem with an asphalt paving job done on our street in August of this year. The asphalt company placed a new layer of asphalt on a section of our street, leaving about 100 yards without resurfacing. The area with new asphalt looks great, and the neighbors are happy. However, the area that was not resurfaced is a mess with heavy black tire tracks. The machinery and trucks used for asphalting track the asphalt over the area in front of our home and onwards up to the street, and we have to look at that every day we drive into or out of our driveways. I talked to Kyle Hubbard at Cary's Engineering Department about how upsetting this issue is to our neighborhood. He was very helpful, and his department sent someone to view the problem in person. And Mr. Hubbard's last letter to me, he said that he felt that the contractor's debris cleanup was acceptable. I, however, do not concur with that statement. This was my reply to Mr. Hubbard. By the way, we've had three letters going back and forth, and I will leave these with this woman here so that you people can look at the communication we've had. Dear Mr. Hubbard, thank you for your letter of September 30th. You have been very courteous and responsive to my request regarding the asphalt problem on our street. Your explanation for the approach taken with the asphalt project sounds logical and reasonable from a practical engineering aspect. However, aesthetics play a very important role in the upkeep of neighborhoods. Lockmere, like many areas, is a very well-kept neighborhood. People take pride in their homes and surrounding environments. Right now, the appearance of the street is, for me, unacceptable. Unfortunately, this is not the first time we've had to deal with unsightly tire marks. Approximately a year and a half ago, a construction company did the asphalting on the top part of Cricketry Drive. It took six to eight months before the tire marks cleared up. Now, one more time, we're expected to wait, I suppose, another six to eight months before these tracks diminish. Meantime, we, the few neighbors who have to look at this section of messy streets on a daily basis, are expected to ignore the mess. It seems to me that the planning for this job should have included leaving the street uniformly asphalted instead of the current patched approach. The aftermath of these two asphalt projects on our street does nothing to enhance our pride of home ownership. In my mind, the situation should be revisited. Wouldn't it be wonderful to see...
I'm sorry to have to interrupt you. Your time has expired. If you have additional com...
Just one second. Wouldn't it be wonderful to see if you could allocate a few dollars to do the other part of the 100 yards?
If you have additional comments, you can leave them with the clerk, and we'll be sure to get them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Can you move to your left? It'll help the guys in the booth if you stay at the right.
Stay here?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you so much for allowing us to be part of your agenda tonight. We are Sarah Perkins and Jean Lawson from Hospice of Wake County. We asked to be here tonight because we feel so strongly about the need to thank you in person for the support that the Town of Cary has given to Hospice of Wake County. Of course, we will always write a thank you letter, but appearing in person just seems like the right way to express our appreciation for your support of our work. As you know, our mission is to empower individuals, families, and communities to embrace meaning at end of life. The number of patients we serve is growing steadily as our area continues to expand with new citizens. Over the past 12 months alone, we have served 407 Cary residents through our hospice program. As we continue to give comfort, care, and compassion for those who are at the end of their lives, we also continue to be grateful for our supporters such as the Town of Cary who allow us to serve our patients. Whether it's in their homes here in Cary, or in our area hospitals, nursing homes, or our hospice home, our patients get the added benefits of dignity and peace under our hospice care. Our patients' families can receive the added benefit of grief center counselors free of charge as well. Your support has ensured that all receive care whether they have insurance or not. As always, a patient's inability to pay is never a factor in receiving our care. The uninsured, the homeless, and the poor get the same high standards of care as everyone else. Thanks to you, we have achieved highest honors for our work, and we're ranked in the top 100 hospices across the nation. We invite you to come tour our hospice home located near the state fairgrounds on Trinity Road inside the Cary Town Limits, and to contact us with any questions about how your support directly affects care and compassion for those at the end of life. We appreciate your support and hope you'll find us worthy of your continued endorsement of our work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Could I invite the next speaker forward?
Anyone else for Public Speaks Out before we move to public hearings?
I see no one. I'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to our first public hearing. This is Item E1. It's the public hearing for rezoning 13 RAZ16 Spring Arbor Plan Development District. Ms. Grant and of our staff will present the item. We're going to hear from the applicant, and then we'll open a public hearing and hear from anyone who would like to speak on this rezoning, and council will not take action on this item tonight. Instead, we're going to refer it to our Planning and Zoning Board. Ms. Grant.
Thank you. Good evening. For your consideration, is a request to rezone approximately 32.68 acres located at 1695 Kildare Farm Road. The subject property is highlighted in yellow. You can see it is situated north of US 1 and Highway 64 and to the east of Kildare Farm Road. And here's a close-up aerial view of the subject property. Many of you are familiar with this being known as the Keesler property, and it is developed with a single-family home and agricultural uses that have existed on the property for many years. Cary's land use plan designation for the property...
Can you move to your left? It'll help the guys in the booth if you stay at the right.
Stay here?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you so much for allowing us to be part of your agenda tonight. We are Sarah Perkins and Jean Lawson from Hospice of Wake County. We asked to be here tonight because we feel so strongly about the need to thank you in person for the support that the town of Cary has given to Hospice of Wake County. Of course, we will always write a thank you letter, but appearing in person just seems like the right way to express our appreciation for your support of our work. As you know, our mission is to empower individuals, families, and communities to embrace meaning at end of life. The number of patients we serve is growing steadily as our area continues to expand with new citizens. Over the past 12 months alone, we have served 407 Cary residents through our hospice program. As we continue to give comfort, care, and compassion for those who are at the end of their lives, we also continue to be grateful for our supporters, such as the town of Cary, who allow us to serve our patients. Whether it's in their homes here in Cary, or in our area hospitals, nursing homes, or our hospice home, our patients get the added benefits of dignity and peace under our hospice care. Our patients' families can receive the added benefit of grief center counselors free of charge as well. Your support has ensured that all receive care, whether they have insurance or not. As always, a patient's inability to pay is never a factor in receiving our care. The uninsured, the homeless, and the poor get the same high standards of care as everyone else. Thanks to you, we have achieved highest honors for our work, and we're ranked in the top 100 hospices across the nation. We invite you to come tour our hospice home, located near the state fairgrounds on Trinity Road inside the Cary town limits, and to contact us with any questions about how your support directly affects care and compassion for those at the end of life. We appreciate your support and hope you'll find us worthy of your continued endorsement of our work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Could I invite the next Anyone else for Public Speaks Out before we move to public hearings? I see no one. I'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to our first public hearing. This is Item E1. It's the public hearing for a rezoning 13 REZ-16 Spring Arbor Plan Development District. Ms. Granton of our staff will present the item. We're going to hear from the applicant, and then we'll open a public hearing and hear from anyone who would like to speak on this rezoning. The council will not take action on this item tonight. Instead, we're going to refer it to our Planning and Zoning Board. Ms. Granton.
Thank you. Good evening. For your consideration is a request to rezone approximately 32.68 acres located at 1695 Kildare Farm Road. The subject property is highlighted in yellow. You can see it is situated north of US-1 and Highway 64, and to the east of Kildare Farm Road. And here's a close-up aerial view of the subject property. Many of you are familiar with this being known as the Keesler property, and it is developed with a single-family home and agricultural uses that have existed on the property for many years. Cary's land use plan designation for the property is low-to-medium-density residential and/or office and institutional. The existing zoning is residential 40. The proposed zoning is planned development district major. The applicant has proposed a PDD that would provide a one-story, 90,000-square-foot maximum life care community with a maximum of 80 beds, a maximum of 35 detached residential lots, with a density yield of 2.15 dwelling units per acre as a maximum. They've proposed a minimum lot size of 6,750 square feet, and a zoning condition that states that there would be an 8,000-square-foot minimum lot size when lots are within 75 feet of the Wimbledon subdivision to the north of the property. And the plan also includes open space that exceeds the requirements in Cary's land development ordinance. There's a link in your staff report, and this was provided to the property owners as well, a land use, master land use plan that shows where the single-family detached homes would be located, and shows the office and institutional component on the subject property, and shows where open space and buffers are provided. Recently, the applicant provided staff with a layout that showed where the lots were going to be situated. We learned it was very important to the adjacent property owners to know that there would be a residential street coming through the property, and that homes along the street would back up to the Lockmere neighborhood. The applicant had initially proposed a very, very detailed plan, and staff asked that they wait until the site plan to present that, because it showed certain reductions to LDO standards that needed to wait until the site plan to be reviewed. But this general layout showing where the lots would be situated, staff felt was appropriate for you to review at the time of the PDD. Property owners within 400 feet of the subject property were notified by mail. The property was posted and advertised. Two protest petitions were received from property owners in the vicinity. They're shown in blue. Because they are outside the 100-foot buffer immediately around the property, they would not constitute a valid protest. We have summarized the concerns, however, that were on those protest petitions. Traffic, traffic on Kildare Farm Road especially, site lighting for future development, how the building would be designed. There were questions about connectivity that was not part of the protest petition, but a call from the adjacent Waltonwood neighborhood. Lot size and density was a concern, and then we had a phone call from a citizen in the Lockmere development who was concerned about potential impacts to the Lowman Lake, and had questions about stormwater management regulations. The site is impacted, according to Cary's GIS maps, by a stream buffer. Field determination would be required at the time of site plan. The site is not impacted by any existing or proposed greenway trails or parks, and Cary's transportation plan shows Kildare Farm Road as a major thoroughfare. And there is a fixed transit route with Ctran along Kildare Farm Road. The site, as I mentioned, is developed, and this is a picture of the existing home on the subject property. It is listed in our inventory, as indicated in the staff report. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward. Following the public hearing, I will be available for any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Granton. Would the applicant please
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Bo Cook, and I'm here representing HH Hunt Corporation, who is the applicant for this particular rezoning. I think staff did a great job kind of presenting the overall facts of this zoning case, but I would like to just add a couple of things that I think are important. One, I think we have met the intent of the amended comprehensive plan for the Keesler property, where we are actually providing single-family residential as well as an assisted living facility. So, in our minds, we feel like that what we are putting forth meets the intent of what that amendment to the comprehensive plan is trying to achieve. I do have a couple of comments about the plans. The one that's shown on the screen now is one that we just submitted recently. The one that actually got submitted to, I guess you all and your plan, or the package that was probably sent earlier, was more of a generic plan. The reason that I think a detailed plan is important is because we worked with the adjacent neighborhoods, especially the adjacent homeowners that share a common property line along the Wimbledon neighborhood, and we actually shared with them a very more detailed plan than what is being put forth here. What we have found in the rezonings that we've done in other areas is that the more detail that you can provide, it eliminates a lot of questions and issues down the road. That actually is good for the staff and the neighbors. If you go through a rezoning that doesn't have a lot of detail to it, it leaves the neighbors kind of up in the air as to what's coming next. So they have a kind of a situation where they can't put things to rest. So what we have found in the past, and the way we approach things, is that we kind of tackle those head-on. So we look forward to working with the neighbors before we even get to this point. And we have done quite a bit with the Wimbledon neighborhood. We probably had three or four meetings with the larger group, and it kind of works its way down to the adjacent homeowners, the ones that are most affected by what's going to actually be done here. And what we have actually done is we have actually gained the support of all of the adjacent neighbors that are common with that property line, which we think is very important. A couple of the items that were shown that came up as questions through the, I guess, some of the invalid protest petitions, those are the type of things that we actually address on a zoning. So we give them details of what the building's going to look like. There's a lot of questions about the lights. We have exactly the type of lights we want to use because we've been down that road before. You know, a lot of concern, or some concern about the assisted living is where the service drive is. So a lot of that is really necessary in order to give the residents, and even the town, kind of the confidence that this is what it is, it's not going to change. We recognize the fact that some applicants might see that as kind of locking themselves in to a specific plan. We're the applicant. We're the intended user for the property. We're the owner of the assisted living. We're the management agent, so we're very unique in how we are approaching this. We do have single-family here, and actually, we teamed up with our Homes Division. We have a Homes Division within our company that will actually construct those homes. So we're kind of an all-in-one situation to where we know exactly what we want to do. We know exactly what type of houses we want to put on those lots. We know exactly how the assisted living is going to be constructed, what it's going to look like. And those are the type of things that neighbors want to know. So what I'm in hopes of is that we can continue working with staff to where we can make those details a part of this plan, so that we can put to rest, you know, one time, what we're going to do on that property. And if it changes, if our intent changes, we understand completely that we have to come back here to make those changes. So we just think it's very important to provide a detailed plan, and all I'm asking is, is that somehow we work the staff that we can do that. A couple of other things I just want to touch on. Everybody's concerned with traffic. Unfortunately, it's just something we have to deal with. I think what we have put forth here is a very minimal impact on traffic. Everybody has opinions, but we believe that the assisted living facility in particular has an off-peak type of traffic flow. You're not going to get people coming in during the early morning rush, nor in the evening. Our staff actually is staggered throughout the day. We have some that would come in at 6:00, 7:00, 9:00. They would leave at 3:00, 4:00, and 5:00. So it's not just a concentrated rush of traffic coming out with the assisted living. 35 residential lots, they're going to create some traffic, but for what could be put on this property, I think what we have here is a very low impact to the traffic. One of the emails that I saw had some concerns about sediment leaving our site, getting into Swift Creek, and getting on into the Lockmere Lake. We have to follow strict standards, not only with the town of Cary, but with the state of North Carolina. So there's protections that'll be built in with any plan that gets approved, and there's oversight, not only from the town, but also with the state. I think the intensity of what we are putting forth is compatible with the neighborhood. Obviously, we have the single-family houses that will complement what's next door in Wimbledon. They'll be equal or larger in size. The assisted living is a one-story facility. Basically, it would be a one-story from Kildare Farm Road, and as the property kind of slopes back towards the rear, we'll actually have a basement or a lower level on the assisted living, and that's where a lot of our service-type functions would occur. And then we would go from there into what we call special care, but it's a memory care unit, which would be a part of this assisted living building. But basically, from the road, you would see a one-story building, and as you kind of go down with the grade, it kind of would step down, and even though the special care would be a one-story building as well. And I'll just, I'll close for now, but basically, we, our company that's been around since the '60s, we're a family-owned. Like I said, we're a one-stop shop. You know, what we say here will continue throughout the whole process, and even after it's built, if we're successful. We just believe in being a part of a neighborhood. We don't want to come in and just be a detriment to anybody's neighborhood. And I think what we are proposing is actually a very needed type service that, unless you actually have experienced it, you don't understand how critical it is to be nearby. And even, some people will say that, you know, there's already enough in town. Unfortunately, there's not. There's a lot of unanswered needs. Walton Woods is a CCRC, which will have a complete, kind of a spectrum of care. We kind of deal with assisted living and the memory care, which are two very unique aspects of that senior living. We feel like it's a great complement to the neighborhood that we're proposing it in. Being next or nearby to Western Wake is obviously a plus. So I think I've covered everything I want to. I'll be more than happy to answer anybody's questions if they have any.
We might call on you later.
That's fine.
Hang by. Ms. Granton, if you've completed your report, I'll open the public hearing.
Public hearing's open now, so.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the first speaker and invite them forward. Anyone to speak?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for a chance to speak. My name is Mike Harward. My wife Denise and I live at 114 Lyndale Court. We've lived there for 20 years. As I think you know, Lyndale Court is the street that runs parallel to the Keesler property. Those of us that live on the south side of it share a boundary line, as Mr. Cook pointed out, with the Keesler property. I'm grateful for the detail that Mr. Cook has provided in our meeting so far. However, what concerns us at the lower end of Lyndale Court is the placement of a possible water retention pond or some water collection-type pond. Mr. Cook has indicated that the details of that have not been settled yet, but on the two or three illustrations we've seen, the pond lies right up against the property line. We're concerned about the size of the pond, the actual configuration of the pond, any noise, any odor associated with that, especially if it's going to lie where we have seen it pictured. And again, I emphasize, Mr. Cook has said that that's not all settled yet. He's indicated it could be as large as 19,000 square feet. So we're concerned about that, and I'd respectfully ask the council to be concerned about HH Hunt achieving what they want at the property, but not doing it at the expense of the quality of life for those of us that live at the lower end of Lyndale Court. I'm going to ask more questions as the process goes on about details about it, and I would just ask that the council be as concerned about that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker for this public hearing.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak to you in regards to 13 REZ-16 rezoning. I am Jane Gleason. My husband, Tom English, and I live on Lyndale Court, just north of the property, and our concern is in regards to the traffic. Despite the claim that a traffic study is not warranted based on a formula noted in the town's report, we believe that our real-world experiences with traffic in the areas noted support further study of this area before rezoning is approved. Our primary concern, based on daily observation, entering and exiting the Wimbledon subdivision at Laver Drive over the past 21 years, is the speed of traffic acceleration from Tryon Road, the Tryon Road Light, across a rise on Kildare Farm Road of about, that is about 100, 150 yards above or south of the Laver egress. The proposed development envisions adding another right turn, excuse me, egress south of Laver. Although the town notes that a traffic study is not warranted due to the estimated number of peak morning and evening trips theorized to be generated in this development, we believe a traffic study is urgently needed for the reasons I'm about to describe. The additional traffic will add an existing problem to this portion of Kildare Farm Road. Presently, traffic heading north on Kildare Farm Road accelerates well beyond the posted speed of 45 miles per hour from Tryon to Wimbledon and areas further north. This alone creates a dangerous situation for residents of Wimbledon exiting Laver onto Kildare, whether they're turning left, which has become increasingly difficult at all times of day, or whether they're turning right. Additionally, the hill or rise in the road which exists on Kildare at the north end of the Keesler property limits sight of Laver for those who are speeding down Kildare to approximately three seconds. Furthermore, as they pull out onto Kildare, residents and visitors to the new development will be accelerating from 0 to 45 in the right lane, causing additional peril to those wishing to either slow down and enter Laver, or those wishing to pull out of Laver onto Kildare. The additional traffic will create, and the second reason I have, and my husband and I have, is that the additional traffic will create an increase in cut-through traffic down Laver and through Wimbledon to get over to Cary Parkway, creating noise and hazards, especially to children awaiting and exiting buses. Because residents and visitors to the new development will have limited opportunities to turn left or south on Kildare Farm Road, we know Wimbledon will see increased traffic flow and congestion hazards. Wimbledon is already a shortcut for traffic. Presently, McEnroe and Coorsdale- Presently, McEnroe and Coorsdale serve as a shortcut for residents of McGregor Downs, and the residents of Troon regularly turn around at McEnroe Circles since they have limited left turn into their development coming from the north on Kildare Farm Road. So my husband and I believe that a comprehensive traffic study should be conducted, given the situations that we've described, and that the rezoning request should be denied at this time. Our primary concern is for the safety of the residents of Wimbledon, the new residents, and visitors to the proposed development, and to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for this public hearing.
I'm Stacy Farrell of 110 Lyndale Court. As Bo had said to everyone here that he did, you know, he's been very great in terms of having meetings with the neighborhood. Like Mac had said earlier, there's definitely concern with the pond and the water retention that's going to be adjacent to the property. However, Bo is definitely very clear in that the terms of that pond have not been yet fully decided, and it does seem, you know, very much the case that he's willing to share those details once they come to light. In terms of the buffer and the rest of the plan, myself, my husband, and a lot of the other Jason property owners are in support of the plan. Again, he's been very forthcoming in terms of the buffer, what he's willing to do in terms of making it Class A buffer with much better coverage between our houses and the houses that'll be behind us, in addition to the length of the buffer. So I just wanted to come forth just to tell everyone that we, for the most part, are in support once the pond and the buffer situation gets resolved and gets really put on paper. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing?
Type A buffer.
My name is John Long. I live at 109 Ronaldsby Drive in McGregor Downs. I live across the road from this particular project that you're discussing. I'm here to talk about the traffic concerns that we in McGregor Downs have, and I don't, I'm not an official representative of McGregor homeowners. However, I am a member, and I live contiguous to these Keesler properties. My concern is the traffic coming out of McGregor Downs and entering Kildare Farms is already a quagmire. There are many people that live in McGregor that won't even try to access Kildare through the Glasgow Street. They will in turn drive all the way around to come out Queens Ferry where there's a stoplight, and that they can get on the road. Many of the parents who have teenage drivers, I'm told, won't allow the teenagers to enter Kildare from Glasgow. Now, that tells you that we've got a real problem already. Recently, you approved a project across the street, which is another Keesler property, which is in my backyard. And we discussed traffic at that time. It was said that Tryon Road and Kildare Farm was at their max at that time. Now, I understand, talking to traffic people, that it is maxed out. And the proposal that was presented earlier says that we will add another lane down in front of the Walmart section over there. Well, that doesn't help us in McGregor at all. What we've got is a real problem now, and I ask you, if you approve this project, that you do it on contingent, that the developer install a stoplight at Glasgow and Kildare Farms. That will help the traffic get onto Kildare Farm. It'll help a present project, problem. It'll also help with this project. And that's, those are my concerns, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you. Next speaker for this public hearing? Anyone else for this public hearing? Close this public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments. Ms. Bush?
A quick question. Could you speak to the thresholds required with regards to traffic and what the threshold would be to require a traffic study?
It did not exceed 100 peak hour trips, and that was the threshold. Based on the 35 single-family lots and the 80-bed facility, according to the trip generation manual used by our engineering department, it was determined that it would not generate greater than 100 peak hour trips.
If I remember right, a quick follow-on, if, I remember right, the same thing happened to the property across the street. It also didn't require a traffic study?
I don't, I don't believe that was the case. I believe that did require a traffic study, if I'm not mistaken, but for Keesler across the street.
Good evening, council. Yeah, the office building that was located across the street did require a traffic study. That fell under our previous APF ordinance. The trip generation at that time was only 50 trips, so that kicked in. Since we've changed the, repealed that ordinance, the new trip threshold is 100 trips now.
That's why I had the 50 number in my head. Thank you.
And while you're there, what is the, from that study, what is the level of service from the two signalized, closest two signalized intersections?
I believe at Tryon and Kildare Farm Road, I believe it's at a low service E. I don't have what it was at Queens Ferry Road. Certainly can have that information available, but I think it was a little bit better than that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Euro?
It just seems like each meeting, we have a rezoning that includes, at least one that includes a house that's on our historic resources inventory. So I just want to mention that again. There's not a lot we can do about it right here, right now. But I do hope, as this goes through the process, that the applicant and the staff and whoever, and other interested parties there are, can look and see if there's any way whatsoever to save or move the house, or do whatever we need to do with that. But it seems like we're just getting a lot of these, you know, each time. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but that's the way it seems to be playing out.
Okay. Ms. Fran?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate folks coming out tonight to share their concerns. I think we all hear you on the traffic issue. And I'd like to commend the neighbors and the applicant for working together to address some of their concerns. It's not very often where we, you know, get some of these, where the adjoining or abutting property owners actually support the project. I do think that speaks volumes. Generally, I actually support the project. I think the lot sizes are like-kind in quality to what's to the north. I think it fills a much-needed need in our community. We've had these discussions now for quite some time about the growing senior population in Cary, and how are we going to be best prepared for them and be able to take care of them? And I think this does help in that regard. It's also close to the hospitals and facilities in the area, meets our land use plan, it's along a C-Trans route. So I guess if they can, you know, work out the details on the BMP and, you know, generally, at first glance, I support the project.
Other comments? Ms. Eric.
I had a related traffic question, just going back to the traffic study. You may want to come up here, Jerry. But when you do it, even if this project tripped the 100 peak hour trips, does a traffic study normally include the impact on other internal streets? Because that was part of the concern, is that traffic would be routed through existing neighborhoods. And I think it's important to clarify what a traffic study would even do.
Correct. Generally, our traffic studies in this context are generally targeted towards our more major intersections that are signalized. If there's an opportunity that it's more convenient maybe to go through a neighborhood instead of maybe going up the road a little bit to a collective road like Coorsdale or Drive, then, you know, that, we may take that into consideration, but it's kind of more, what's a more expeditious route to get to where you want to go that way? So, but we generally don't do the smaller-sized streets in general.
Right. And then the question about the light at Glasgow, I don't disagree that there's an issue there, but is it within our power to require a developer to install a traffic light to fix an existing problem that's not impacted by this, by new development?
I think, as with all traffic mitigations or traffic findings, those are voluntary conditions that the applicant would have to evaluate and consider. The other thing that I think would have to be some consideration is since this is a state-maintained route, they would have a pretty big voice in whether a signal would go at that particular location. And I believe, if I'm correct, when the office building for the Keesler came in, I think that was also a pretty significant issue at that time. And I think staff did look at the volumes on that road when it didn't quite meet the warrants or justification for a signal at that particular time. But that's been two years ago. Pardon me?
Those are state warrants.
Those are state warrants. Correct.
But things do change in two years. I mean, maybe it's time for us to get back out there.
It certainly could be if, you know, we could certainly look at, make an updated study there if we needed to look at that, see if we are any closer at this point in time.
I would say with the impact of this additional development, that's probably a good idea. And then one other related traffic question, if that's okay. So I was struck by the second neighborhood speaker who spoke about the rise of Kildare Farm and about, you know, while the town can post a speed limit, we can't say, well, we can, you know, we can also have officers out there. But how fast people drive is unfortunately how fast they drive. But I wondered if there's enough space there to put an acceleration lane for people who are turning right, because I think her point was well-made, that you turn right and you better get to 45 pretty quick, because the people coming over that rise are going more than 45. It doesn't appear that there's enough room to do that, but I thought it was worth asking.
And generally, in most urban cases, they really discourage the use of those acceleration lanes, because first of all, there probably isn't enough distance between the next drive or next street ahead. But it also becomes a real, real issue with, you know, trying to merge into traffic, blind spots and things of that nature.
Merge lane's probably a better term. I thought that was worth bringing up.
Particularly the volume of traffic that we're talking about. Yeah, that, so that would probably be.
Then I had a BMP question. Can you humor me a little bit? Can the applicant speak to where they think the BMP will go? And also, the size of the BMP will be dependent on how much impervious surface there is and how much stormwater has to be contained, right?
I think the applicant has certainly, given the topography on the site, they have some latitude or flexibility in design. I think they can, you know, given, it looks like it slopes all the way to the back, so there may be some opportunities for them to be flexible about where that BMP goes. But that's certainly something their designers really ought to look at and probably respond to the neighbors about.
So there's an opportunity, then, that they could put that BMP where it's not adjacent to other, to the people who live along the street that's to the north of this.
Yeah, I just think that's something that they really need to look at. And again, there could be an opportunity for them to put something less intrusive there, or maybe shift it entirely on a different side of where the buffer is.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I think the, you know, the question that you brought up, Ms. Gale, about the traffic light is, it's one of those unintended consequences things. We have them all the time. We have it over at Coorsdale. If you get the light, what you end up getting is far more traffic, because you now become the new cut-through. And when we were dealing with that office building, what was demonstrated is that the inconvenience of driving around and coming out in Queens Ferry ends up being a far safer, far more convenient way to go than all of a sudden having everything pouring into your, by your driveway and onto the street. It's just one of those catch-22s that we have to deal with. And you reach a point where, after a while, you make that decision to do it. But it's one of those, be careful what you wish for. You know, it does happen, and we've had it all over town. And that's just one of those dilemmas that we have to, I think, look at on a case-by-case basis.
Other comments? Okay. We'll see this at a future planning and zoning board meeting, and they will make their recommendation, and it will come back to us at a later date. Thank you, Ms. Granton. We removed the next item from the agenda, which was item two, the Cary Park PDD and staff will re-advertise another public hearing for rezoning at a future date, future council meeting, which takes us to item E3. It's the public hearing, 13 REZ-02, Old Carpenter Property at Marshville Parkway. Ms. Granton will once again present the staff request, and we're going to hear from our applicant. Then we're going to open the public hearing for anyone who wants to speak about this rezoning. And again, council will not take action on this tonight. Instead, we're going to refer to the planning and zoning board. Ms. Granton?
Thank you. This is a request to rezone 21.13 acres located at 2832 Carpenter Upchurch Road. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow, shown to the south of Morrisville Parkway, west of Lewis Stevens Road, and east of Carpenter Upchurch Road. And a zoomed-in view shows that the property is a combination of cleared land and some natural forest area. There are some agricultural and single-family uses existing on the subject property. The land use plan designation is a combination of both commercial and high-density residential, and the property is located within the Morrisville Parkway and NC-55 Mixed Use Overlay District. The existing zoning on the subject property is general commercial conditional use and residential multifamily conditional use. And the property, again, is located within a mixed-use overlay district. Therefore, the rezoning process coming before you tonight is the MXD process with an associated preliminary development plan. There was an activity center concept plan that was approved for this property in 2006 that showed the designation of the commercial, residential multifamily, and open space components on the plan. There were two different options of the plan. Option one, which showed the commercial building orientation and the residential buildings here, and a commercial building in this corner at Lewis Stevens and Morrisville Parkway. And then the second option, slightly different configuration, with the shopping center facing differently, backing up to the residential neighborhood to the south. One thing that remade the same in both plans was this commercial component in the corner. And with the proposed rezoning to MXD and preliminary development plan, the applicant is proposing to keep that commercial component in the corner at Lewis Stevens and Morrisville Parkway the same. What they are proposing to do is provide for residential multifamily and two non-residential components. 285 residential multifamily dwelling units and a maximum of 10,500 square feet of retail or restaurant use. And here's a color illustration of the plan that gives a little bit of a better depiction of what's being requested, so that you can see the orientation of the proposed residential buildings and the commercial retail components. Property owners within 400 feet of the subject property were notified by mail. The property was posted and advertised. Staff received three protest petitions. Two of them were outside that 100-foot boundary. The one protest petition that we received that did have land within the 100-foot boundary constituted less than 1% of that area. Therefore, it is not a valid protest. We did, however, note the concerns. The number-one concern from the adjacent property owners was traffic. School impacts, the proposed use and density were also listed on the protest petitions. In addition, we received a number of emails, phone calls from adjacent property owners with concern primarily about traffic. There was also concern about the date of the meeting. Neighbors to the south had a Homeowners Association meeting that was scheduled for the same night. They expressed concern that the applicant had scheduled the meeting on the same night. Staff explained that staff had scheduled the meeting with no knowledge of the Homeowners Association meeting. So we wanted to make sure that that was clear, that that was not the applicant that had scheduled the public hearing for tonight. The site is impacted by a stream buffer, according to Cary's GIS maps, and field determination would be required at the time of site plan review. Cary's Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Master Plan shows a street-side trail in the vicinity of the subject property. And Morrisville Parkway is designated as a thoroughfare. A traffic study was required, and was conducted in February of this year, and the results are contained within your staff report. In addition to some of the specific conditions shown on the preliminary development plan with a limit on the number of-- with a limit on the number of buildings, the number of units, limit on the square footage of the commercial component, the applicant has also voluntarily offered to construct an off-site southbound left-turn lane at NC-55 and Morrisville Parkway with appropriate tapers as recommended by the traffic study, and to construct access points to the site also recommended by the traffic study. The site is not currently served by an existing or future Ctran route. And at this time, this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is present. And then, following the public hearing, staff is available for your questions.
Thank you. At this time, would the applicant come forward?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the property owners, Joel and Dale Carpenter. And I'd just like to start out by saying that this particular parcel, they have owned for approximately 80 years. And for those that might not know Joel and Dale, they are part of the Carpenter family who came with the Carpenter community in 1790. So the family has been out in this area for a long time. The request is to rezone the property to 285 multifamily residential units and a maximum of 10,500 square feet of retail or restaurant use. Currently, the property is approved for approximately 130,000 square feet of commercial and 32 multifamily units. The current commercial zoning permits general retail, including restaurants, both fast food or sit-down, convenience store, gas stations, and other general retail uses. The current use of the property was approved in 2004 as part of the Morrisville Parkway Activity Center Concept Plan. In 2004, the commercial designation was requested by the property owners because of its location at the future intersection of Morrisville Parkway and Carpenter Upchurch Road. The intersection was envisioned to be a prime location for commercial development due to its location at this key intersection. However, this expectation was taken away when Morrisville Parkway was extended to Carpenter Upchurch Road, and the intersection movements were severely restricted. Existing northbound traffic on Carpenter Upchurch Road must turn right onto Morrisville Parkway, and existing southbound traffic must turn right. Movement is also restricted for east and westbound traffic on Morrisville Parkway. Joel and Dale Carpenter have tried to market the property for commercial development. Any interest there was went away with the completion of the extension of the Morrisville Parkway and the restrictive movements. They have talked to many users. Each response has been the same. Due to the traffic patterns at the intersection, the site is unsuitable for commercial development. The Carpenter store that opened over 130 years ago has also been impacted by the restrictive intersection. The family hopes to be able to keep the store open after seeing a tremendous reduction in business and actually traffic in that area due to the intersection. After sitting on the property for almost 10 years, Joel and Dale Carpenter examined alternative uses. Given the existing uses in the area and the fact that the property is located within a neighborhood activity center, they decided to move forward with a request to rezone the majority of the property to multifamily residential. The site is well-suited for multifamily. One of the guiding principles of the comprehensive growth plan is to increase permitted densities in preferred growth areas. The Morrisville Parkway mixed-use center is designated by Cary as a preferred growth area. Also, medium and/or high-density residential development located in a mixed-use activity center also has the potential to support the goals of the Affordable Housing Plan by offering alternative housing opportunities. The preliminary development plan provides documentation that the proposed development will be predominantly one- and two-bedroom units targeting young professionals, young families without children, and older individuals and couples. Research shows that multifamily projects with one- and two-bedrooms have minimal school-age children. Since 2004, the property has been approved for approximately 130,000 square feet of commercial retail use. As I've said, uses permitted on the site include restaurants, fast food or sit-down convenience stores, and other uses that could be potentially open 24/7. Based on the existing zoning, more traffic would be generated under the current use of the property than what is proposed. It is also important to note again here that the property owners had no control over the way the intersection was constructed at Morrisville Parkway and Carpenter Upchurch Road. The preliminary development plan is consistent with the design guidelines for mixed-use centers as outlined in your staff report. The proposed plan provides interconnectivity for pedestrian and vehicular uses within the residential and commercial portions of the mixed-use center. The small-scale and limited square footage of the proposed retail-commercial uses on the site helped provide a transition to the, appropriate transition to the adjacent residential uses. The plan provides for a 50-foot Type A buffer adjacent to Heritage Pines, which is the same width that is currently approved under the current zoning. In addition to the required perimeter buffers and streetscape buffers, the plan provides community gathering space areas that are conveniently situated for the residence and for the commercial areas of the plan. A profit walking trail is also provided adjacent to the stormwater management BMP. We know that council members have heard from property owners in the area about the proposed rezoning. It's important to note that we held five separate meetings with adjacent property owners within 400 feet of the property as required by the town of Cary. Some of the main concerns that we heard were traffic, impact on schools, impact on property values, and crime. I would like to note that from several meetings with the Heritage Pines residents, we did make a revision to the plan and moved the units further away from the property line and added a road to further separate the proposed multifamily buildings from Heritage Pines. As I have already pointed out, the preliminary plan commits to primarily one- and two-bedroom units. This will ensure a low number of school-age children, thus minimal impact on schools. Less traffic will be generated with the proposed uses than what is currently approved for the property. There are also residents who believe that there will be an increase in crime due to the influx of residents living in these multifamily units. Our research shows that property values will not be lowered and that there is not an increase in crime with multifamily developments. The town's own police department did a study showing that there is not an increase in crime due to multifamily development. In summary, Joel and Dale Carpenter had all intentions to develop their property as currently approved. Unfortunately, due to circumstances beyond their control, this has not been possible. The Carpenter family have had a long-time presence in Cary. They only want what is best for the community and the town of Cary. The family has been a part of the Carpenter community for approximately 223 years. They are committed to a quality development that will be an asset to the area and will continue to work with the adjacent property owners as we continue through the process. I will be happy to answer any questions. Other members of the team are here, as are the property owners. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite the first speaker forward for this public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Hank Say, and I'm a resident of Preston Village. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm here to voice opposition to 13-REZ-02 Old Carpenter at Morrisville Parkway. You know, I was here just a month ago, and frankly, I did not really expect to be back here quite so soon. So why am I back this quickly? First, let me say that I fully understand the right of property owners to pursue the highest value and the best use of their land. I also respect the Carpenter family for their long history and heritage in our community and their commitment to our community. Unfortunately, the rezoning request that they have requested does not fit within the current community and does cause significant issues. Okay? They have the right to request the rezoning, and the Town of Cary Council certainly has the responsibility to hear their request. In addition, our town has consistently demonstrated responsiveness to engage citizens in order to maximize the great value all of us realize from calling Cary home. So again, thank you for this opportunity. Now, I must say that I'm really troubled by one recurring theme, and that's apartments. We have recently added nearly 400 apartments at the corner of Davis Drive and High House Road. Those have yet to be completed. We've yet to see the impact, but I believe none of us, none of us here can really say with certainty that it is no issue. With that in mind, how can we possibly approve a plan for 285 additional apartments in generally the same area? Specifically, these apartments are impacting the single-family residential homeowners in this area. The vast majority of the homeowners live here because of their quality of life and specifically bought into this area for its residential values and the surrounding appropriate commercial ventures. We've seen, again, we've seen a number of apartments added. An additional 285 would not add value to the community and will negatively impact the citizens. How will it negatively impact us? Well, it will certainly increase traffic. I think that's undeniable. It will certainly raise safety concerns as the location is directly across the street from an elementary school. It is in very close proximity to a public library and public tennis courts. All of these generate heavy pedestrian traffic. The inclusion of fast-food restaurants, which is, which is a part of the plan, which Ms. Topay failed to mention, will increase the number of teenage drivers in this area as it is in close proximity to Green Hope High School. Now, I'm not against teenage drivers. I've raised three of them. However, we all, we all understand the impact, and we can see it in our insurance rates when they're rushing from their lunch hour, from their high school to a fast-food restaurant during their lunch hour. It does raise concerns. Okay? Do we want to draw them to this area? It's an elementary school area. Do we want to draw them into the area of the public library? I'm not sure that's effective use of the community resources or in the best interest of public safety. Additionally, we're once again addressing change in land use while in the midst of an encompassing town plan or new town plan. I'd like to point out, how can the citizens really believe and imagine Cary when we are continuously accosted by requests for high-density residential rezoning? The message being sent is from, from the town, we want to hear your voice. We want to listen to you. Just please don't disagree with us because we're going to move forward. Okay? I don't believe that's true at all. In fact, I believe that's 100% false. I believe the town does want our opinion. I believe the town does want our involvement, but I'm here to tell you that's the perception today. And if we continue to rush forward with additional apartments, it will continue to add to that So in summary, I oppose this plan based on increased traffic, increased density, which is incongruent with the surrounding areas, with a risk to safety, particularly to young children.
I'm sorry, but your time has expired. If you've got one more sentence, go ahead, but otherwise...
Let me finish with just one, one last quote. It'll take just two seconds. And this is from Ms. Nancy Gardner, a senior citizen and educator and a Preston Village resident. Please honor statements from July 25th. A key consideration will be emphasis on the integrity of existing neighborhoods, identifying where preservation of existing character should be the objective. I am concerned with statements like Cary is well-known for the quality and vitality of its neighborhood, but circumstances that could represent threats to neighborhood character are emerging.
Thank you.
Again, I apologize for taking too much time, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sue Allison Dean. I live at 817 Nanny Reams Lane, which is literally backing up onto Marshville Parkway. I moved in and literally after we closed the highway or parkway, opened up and crossed to 55. So, and I work at home, so I've watched the evolution of the parkway back there. I've written to you, the mayor, and you have graciously put me in touch with, I believe it was your highway engineer, who we became frequent pen pals, just to talk about a lot of the issues there. Some of them have, some things have been done to try to make it better, such as having the school buses not do a U-turn at the elementary school. And I know there's been some construction at the high school to help decrease the traffic. But as someone who lives and watches right out my back door, that traffic area is horrendous still. I have grave concerns. I don't have any kids, but, you know, I feel for the parents in the community. The kids, the high school kids, still go to, down to 55 to avoid waiting in the long line, do a U-turn on 55. They still cross over the median in their four-wheel drives. People still go across the train track there. I happen to be one of the first people on the scene. I'm not sure if you're aware, right over the Morrisville border, in February of 2011, a 22-year-old NC State boy was killed. There were two nurses on the scene, and I won't tell you about this situation there, but he was not revivable. I really ask that way I don't have to watch this kind of thing again. I would like to say that if and when it gets developed, that my neighbors and I will be sad to see the landscape scene change and be developed. And I concur with what, what the previous speaker said. I think that Cary is starting to really lose its natural landscape and farm charm that drew a lot of us here. At the same time, being also a commercial property owner, I feel for the carpenters. It's a difficult situation for everyone to be in. I did make a map, although it's not to scale, of the traffic pattern there. And when and if it does get developed, I would strongly encourage, if possible, that there not be any entrance or exit on Morrisville Parkway to this property, that on the Upchurch Carpenter side, that it would be a left-hand only out, and then on the Lewis Stevens side, it could take a left or a right, thereby enabling anyone leaving that property to use the stoplights in place and not have to do any U-turns in front, in front of where the elementary school is. I can tell you that the Mastech companies, several other commercial trucks, including, I've seen Harris Teeter 18-wheelers do U-turns in front of that school. I've seen them do three-point turns, and we haven't even broken through to the other side, connecting the further development of Morrisville Parkway. I also want to note that Morrisville Parkway on the Marshall side has changed to 35 miles an hour consistently through, and I really think it's something that should be relooked So the traffic, and I would be more than happy to sit down with anyone if they need more details on what goes on there. That's, that's really my, my main concern. I think that we, from an aesthetic point of view, being a homeowner, across the way I asked in discussions with the carpenters, that there be an elevated berm densely planted with year-round evergreens for year-round screening. That would include proper irrigation. I know our development, the irrigation along Morrisville Parkway was connected to the model home, who, of course, once they bought it, disconnected it, and we haven't, we've had a failure of thriving plants along our border, which is southern exposure added to the, to the radiant heat from the parkway. Minimize the lighting effects that would flash into our bedrooms there. And I just would like to add in final that as town planners, the long-term parking strategy, I don't know if you're looking at it from, again, since you have an elementary school, high school, library there, are you looking for creating additional parking in that area because there are properties available? Maybe this would be better used as a park and public parking. Coming from New York, I can tell you, as things grow and you add to schools, that becomes a major issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
I'm president of a local community association, Lake Ridge at Preston Village. I'm here tonight, though, to, and my address is two hundred Great Lake Drive. I'm here tonight, though, to speak out of personal conviction and concern. I will say that we have a number of members of our communities that share those concerns, and they're with us tonight, and they've been instructed not to applaud at any time. You face no easy issues up here. I don't know why you keep running for reelection, the issues are so difficult, and I don't envy you the task of deciding on something like this tonight. But obviously, we have a number of concerns, one of which is traffic, and we've had some items quoted so far, but a few of them that I'd add to it is that the, the traffic study showed up to two hundred and seventeen exits per hour at peak hour, and that, to my understanding, was out, is without including the Bradford. It can't include the Bradford that's being built at High House and Davis Road and is still relevant to the Marsville Parkway traffic. We also know that this is going to be connected across Route fifty-five to the other part of Marsville Parkway, way back in the hinterlands, and that will further increase traffic. The fact that there's going to be a new double-turn lane on Route fifty-five is nice, but it also indicates what kind of traffic we're expecting as a, an increase in this, in this And then it's adjacent to a school, and very close to it, I don't know how the children is going to get across the way, and I have to disagree with the owner, speaker, who extolled the fact that these apartments are such that there will not be a large increase of kids in the neighborhood. I don't know who said it, but I think they were right, that we become socialized and we become civilized when we begin, begin to raise children. And that reflects some of our concerns about the population that will be involved in this particular community. I know it's an affordable housing project, and we've heard that goal extolled in many cases, but there are a lot of questions about affordable housing and the impacts that it will have on the community. I'm not aware of any study by the town on what the likely impacts of affordable housing in a place like this will be. I can tell you that vandalism is going up in the area. It's not a crime because they don't catch the vandals. And in addition to that, I can tell you that there've been a number of violent crimes, as you probably remember yourself, over the last six to ten years, associated with apartment buildings in this particular area. So those are concerns as well, and I hope you'll take them very seriously, and perhaps we can have a logical and informed study on what are the impacts of that sort of increase in population, whether it be in affordable housing or not. Because after all, we're getting, we're getting increases in these activities with some very upscale apartment and town home community, communities as a correlation. We don't know if it's coming from that, but it's certainly a legitimate, legitimate cause of concern if the increase in this sort of building of any kind, any scale, any level of socioeconomic level can generate that sort of activity. So I think that to be responsible, the town would need to consider significant increased services to be associated with this, including increase in public safety personnel, so that we can catch the vandals and that we can head off any more serious issues like the gun violence that I referred to. So again, I know it's not an easy task for you to consider, but these are very real concerns, and I hope you don't discount any of them because they're not fashionable. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Morton Berkowitz. I am a resident of Heritage Pines. My address is three oh five Rockport Ridge Way in Cary, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak for myself as well as for many of the residents who are here tonight. I agree with the three previous speakers, but I don't have the confidence that anything will be done about it. So instead, I would ask that you consider the fact that Heritage Pines is a different type of community. It's for people over the age of fifty-five, and at the current time, we have many people who are over the age of eighty, many of whom are disabled or have difficulty walking, and we are already inundated with serious problems from the high school, many of which we have brought to the attention of the town authorities, and very little is being done about it. If you allow fast-food places, such as that beautiful PDQ on the corner of Davis Drive and High House Road alongside the barracks that are being built there, you're going to see the students going from Green Hope High School, not seventy miles an hour down to High House to Redino's, but you're going to see them going the other way, past our development, so that they can eat in a fast-food place. So what I would ask you to do is to take into consideration the fact that this is a unique community, that you have to make provision to accommodate the fact that we are already under the gun. It took seven minutes this morning for me to leave Heritage Pines to get on to Carpenter Upchurch Road. The high school is a serious problem for us and has been for a long time. This is only going to add more traffic, and you're going to have to consider the fact that there are elderly people there who are, find it difficult to walk and are upset by all of this extra traffic. Secondly, we have had a problem there for a long time, and Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your email telling me that a member of your staff was going to contact me about the fact that we have no yellow lines on most of Carpenter Upchurch Road, and only half of it has been paved. Now, I understand that this is a state road and the Department of Transportation is supposed to deal with this. However, I don't know of another town or city that allows a mile and a half stretch of road to go without lane markers, particularly in front of a high school, where we already have people who don't follow the rules to begin with. I have not heard from your staff person, other than the fact that he would get back to me after contacting the Department of Transportation. I called the Department of Transportation, and they plan to fix this in the year two thousand and fifteen. I suspect that the town can do a better job of dealing with the state than I can and correcting this serious problem. The other thing that the town has let go is the CSX Railroad, which destroyed all the trees and bushes alongside the tracks. The town claims they can't do anything about it. Last year, I was told that it is not a big job and that the town would clean it up. In the meantime, we're facing all these rotted trees and bushes, this is the second year this is going on. This is not a big deal. I don't understand why we get lost over there in the town's business. So if you do approve this project, please take into account that fast-food places at the other end on Morrisville Carpenter would be a problem, particularly with the high school kids, and that we need to pay attention to the fact that this is a special community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm, I live in the same neighborhood as the woman who lives on Nanny Reams, I live on Grace Hodges Drive, so I live in a town home that is right beside the elementary school. And I agree a hundred percent with what she said, I have seen every bit of that traffic. The students, they cut through our neighborhood and they're usually late, so they're flying over to get able to go back on to Upchurch and go on to the high school. And the traffic is getting worse and worse, I had a really hard time even taking a U-turn to go back towards Davis Drive. These are very concerning to me because when I see the people coming and they fly down so that they can take their U-turn going front, back to Mars, fifty-five, they are really rushing, I mean, the speed that they just gun it to get to that stoplight is just amazing to me. So I agree with everything everybody has been saying, I just wanted to force my opinion.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, council and mayor. I'm Suri, and I, I come from Magnolia Estates, which is less than point five miles from this proposed property.
Give us your name, please.
Suri.
Thank you.
As one of the council mentioned, we are still, I, I understand that we are still a town and we are not a city, so I hope adding a two hundred and eighty-five apartments to the existing neighborhood is adding burden to the traffic, to the school system. And the third point is the, the safety risk. In the, in the past five days, we saw three burglaries. From October eighteen to October twenty-third, there were three crimes in the area. So we are adding the risk, all these three risk factors by adding two hundred and eighty-five apartments and also adding the fast-food centers and commercial complex. So I hope you'll consider these three major factors. As everybody mentioned, the traffic is one of the major concern, and the schools, we are already running out of, the schools are already too much burden, and if we add two hundred and eighty-five apartments, I can't even imagine the traffic and the school system. I, I moved from New York City, and if I, I go to work on Morrisville Parkway and I cross Davis Drive, in the morning, I don't miss the New York City. I, 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 I expect at least fifteen, twenty minutes there to cross that Davis Drive intersection. And the same time, and the same thing in the evening, I, I cross the Davis Drive, at least it'll take fifteen, twenty minutes now, and I cannot imagine in the next two, three years. Thank you very much, and thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I've been living in Cary for over twenty years, and I've spent the last more than fifteen in Preston Village. Over this time, I have seen a lot of changes. Some of them I haven't really liked. Oh, my name, sorry, Kim Wegler.
Thank you.
Some of the changes I haven't really liked, I moved to Cary because I like a small-town feel, it was a great place to raise my kids. Some of the changes I have liked, I love the new library, I love being close to our schools. As a parent who takes my kid to Green Hope High School in the carpool in the morning, I should, I would like to say you should see it. It's crazy, the traffic at that hour. It'll take me, if I leave five minutes late, it takes me ten minutes longer just to get through, thirty minutes in a carpool line to go maybe a mile and a half just for the school. I see school buses cut through Heritage Pines, which the guy was up here saying that they don't have any kids there, but the school buses are using that cut-through because the traffic is so bad already. I know I've seen an increase, when I come home from work, my commute has gone from about thirteen minutes for eight miles to twenty, or more than twenty minutes depending on the traffic. And I have started cutting through neighborhoods because the light cycle at Davis Drive and Marsville Parkway, sometimes it'll be three or four cycles for me to just get to turn left on Davis Drive. What I really want to encourage, I saw your traffic study was from February, I think things have changed a lot since then, and with the opening of Marsville Parkway, I find that people who live on the other side of fifty-five are using that as a throughway. The traffic has increased exponentially since they've made that connection. And I will agree, that intersection, dumbest intersection ever, I don't know why they made it so you can only turn right, I hate that, and it's very restrictive, and I wish they'd just tear that out, quite honestly. But I think what is also missing from your studies is what is coming on the other side of fifty-five? How many more people are going to be channeling into Marsville Parkway before you add these two hundred and eighty-five apartments on top of all that? The time it takes to get to Bond Park without traffic for me is ten minutes at rush hour, double it, twenty minutes. And I just ask us, what are we trying to create here? Do we want to keep a quality of life where people want to come and enjoy what we have, or do we want to fit so many people in here that we just lose that? And the people who were here twenty years ago want to leave now because what it's become and where it's going is not what we want. And you ask the people, why are they coming from the northeast? You know, what are you leaving behind? Why are you coming here? And I think a lot of them are going to say, traffic and commute times, and that is one big thing that adds to our quality of life. So I just, I really encourage you to think about, what are you trying to create? What are you trying to build? And what are you trying to, to have all of us go through with the traffic? Because it, it is already crazy, and I just think that the impact is going to be far more than you get just from the traffic study that you've done. So I just respectfully ask that you consider all these other additional factors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ashel Contra. I live in a subdivision of Carpenter Village, which is in that, in this area that's of concern. And I have two children who go to elementary school, both to Carpenter Elementary, and for the last couple of years, both, we were trying to get them, so, let me back up. Carpenter Elementary today is a year-round school system. Our zone, the feeder school, is Green Hope Elementary for, for traditional. The last two years, our admission request has been denied because, again, there are more children in closer proximity to the school for Green Hope that are able to get in, and we're just being left behind. So this year, this current year, my son's waitlist was eight, and my neighbor's kid's waitlist was one, and they were denied admission into Green Hope, when in my neighbor's case, their son had to go to middle school, Davis Middle, which is traditional, and the daughter is stuck in Carpenter Elementary. Next year, I'm going to have the same exact problem with my kids, and I'll never be able to get my daughter into Green Hope. Add even five new kids in this two hundred and eighty-five community, my chances are zero. That's it. I mean, every child that's coming into this community is being deprived, I mean, I'm being deprived. I want both kids to be in the same school year or in system. Ain't happening. And this is going to stress that thing, like, the four hundred homes near Davis and High House, I don't know what that will do to Davis Middle, but that's also a concern, but that's already done. So if I can do anything or if, I mean, maybe not this, this building, right? It could be the school system. If there are more schools, if kids can get in, have a choice, I mean, I do have a choice. I can click year-round or traditional, but I know I'm not going to get traditional. So why even have the choice? You can just say, oh, you don't have a choice. You have to move, physically move your home closer to proximity to the school to get into Green Hope or any of the other traditional schools. So that specifically is my concern, and I hear all these traffic concerns as well. Excuse me, so, just wanted to voice them out over here. Thank you so much, mayor, and the town council.
Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Anyone else for this public hearing?
Hello. Thanks for allowing us to give some feedback. My name's Rob Patterson.
Can you move to your left? Thank you.
My name's Rob Patterson. I have a unique perspective. I lived in Preston Village for about 14 years and then six months ago, we moved to an apartment complex. We're waiting for our new home to be vacated in Lake Ridge Town Homes, also on the other side of this development here. So, I have a little different opinion on apartments, having lived there for six months. This is a very nice apartment complex we lived in. It's called Bexley. It's up 55, probably about three or so, I'm sorry, about three miles from where we are going to currently move to. I'll tell you, my daughter and my wife did not want to leave the apartment at night because it was a very, it's a very peculiar setting. It's very transient. People would come and go. You would not know your neighbors. Hardly anybody would like to look at each other when you came in. And it was, it was not good. So, I have a very different opinion about apartments moving in very close to where we live now. I think it does, excuse me, I think it does increase the crime rate. There were a lot of times when police cars were there. We had eviction notices on the doors. Every now and then, we'd find one. It's just not the, I don't think this will enhance the quality of the life in Cary that we moved to Cary for. We don't need the density. We certainly don't need the traffic. And I think it does increase the crime rates. It does not improve, I think, the desirability of the, of the area of Cary in which we currently reside. So, I firmly oppose this development. We'd love to have it as a park. Why not make another park? We would love to see that much better use, I think, for that little piece of land in a very, currently extremely busy area. The traffic would only get worse with this density. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? I see no one. We'll close the public hearing. And before we open it up to council for comments and questions, I do want to make a comment. It's very, it's very important for us to hear your comments and we listen to every one of you. One point needs to be made. This is not a town proposal. This is not a council proposal. The property owner has a right by law to propose a change on his property and we have to listen. That's where we are and that's what we're doing tonight. The council's not pushing it, not advocating for it. We're listening and that's our job this evening. I do, I hope council talks about crime. I hope council talks about traffic. And the Mr. Shiver, the gentleman that, I think his name is Mr. Merkowitz, that talked about staff not getting response, him not getting response, please follow up with him and make sure he gets a response to his questions about his requests for what goes on that road. So, having said that, Ms. Robinson, you and Ms. Bush both live close by there. I'll let you start off.
Okay. Well, I think the most important thing is that the residents of Heritage Pines wished to be here tonight but had a conflict with another meeting. And I talked about it with the applicant and the applicant has offered to continue the public hearing or asked to continue the public hearing if we would allow him to do that, taking this to the following council meeting in order to give the residents an opportunity to come and weigh in on this. I think he might be using that time also to maybe meet with the residents further. I'm not, I'm not sure if that was his intent or not. He's nodding, so I think he might be. But that might give him an opportunity to talk further with the concerned residents, given what he's heard tonight, and also give the Heritage Pines residents an opportunity to come in and weigh on this since obviously it's adjacent to their community and I think it'd be good for them to be able to come.
Okay.
Yeah, the other comment that I would make is I think that we've heard a lot, not just about traffic, but of the unique entrances and exits and intersections that are in this area. And that's being totally honest and transparent. I have one of those high schoolers and lord knows, if any of you saw her do a U-turn there, you'll have to let me know. But I have seen exactly what all of these residents have seen and it's a challenge and I feel for the applicant. They're in, from that perspective, the intersection's there. I don't know what we can do from a town perspective, but that's going to be a great hindrance to something being successful there, but more importantly, for it to be safe there. And that's my biggest concern, is being right across from an elementary school, right by the library where kids walk every single day and all these cars speeding by and making U-turns. And I've seen them go over the humps. It's just, it is a very scary place and I would hate to add any more cars to that section why we still have that problem.
And while we're on traffic, I would like to ask Ms. Grantan or someone else if any of these roads are town-maintained roads and if not, what we're doing with the state to help with these issues.
Both Marshall Parkway and Carpenter Upchurch are both state-maintained roads and we have been in contact, as Mr. Berkowitz had asked, requested, and we're still getting, trying to get some feedback from the district engineer's office. So, as soon as I receive that feedback, we will be back in touch with him.
And what are you asking?
And we are asking them for Mr. Berkowitz's concerns about the pavement condition out there, try to expedite the paving schedule for that roadway, as well as the road markers along the roadway, the paint markings along the roadway as well. So, those are two items that he expressed interest in his email to you that we're following up on.
Okay. Ms. Robinson?
I want to follow up on that median. We've been working on this for a long time to no avail. I know several of us have met with staff. We've met with representatives from the DOT. We have been unsuccessful to this point in encouraging the DOT to remove that median that was installed there and find an alternative solution. I think that we really need to include the citizens in our plea to the DOT and maybe with the new secretary heading up DOT, maybe he would be very sympathetic. He himself is a resident of Cary and I'd like to see us keep pushing on that and see if we might be able to get that median lifted, which first of all, would enable us to have safer egress from the high school, but also I think it would probably help these landowners tremendously and they may not need to pursue the rezoning request that they're pursuing if that median was not there. But it's, it's put in there for safety, but I think it has exponentially increased the lack of safety at this intersection. It's far worse than what would exist if it wasn't there. And I don't think that DOT fully understands what's going on there.
Okay. Other comments, questions?
Yeah, just to follow up on Ms. Robinson's comments about the median. I too have had calls in and spoken with folks at DOT. I think I've tried to talk to about everybody I can get ahold of besides the governor. And we've all gotten nowhere with it. It's been very frustrating. But to the point that if that median and those traffic conditions weren't there, this rezoning would not be being pursued, would be because they would be moving forward with an already previously-approved commercial project. I've heard concerns tonight over fast-food restaurants, that that would be some magical draw for high school kids to come down here and get a Big Mac or something. And if the previous rezoning were to be developed, you're going to have that and then some. The reality is, is residential is not the traffic generator that commercial is. So, if traffic is legitimately your concern, you want a residential project. You might not want this one. I got it. But you want a residential project over commercial. Residential's going to give you some AM traffic, it's going to give you PM traffic. Commercial's going to give you all-day, all-night traffic. So, I just, like, careful what you wish for, thing. And we have seen time and time and time again that apartments, townhomes, high-density-type development is less of a student generator than single-family homes. The statements made that, you know, this would be for young families or young professionals or even seniors, that's pretty much true. As families, you know, husband and wife get married, you have that first kid, they start looking for that single-family house because the apartment's no longer big enough. So, if students are concerned, at least from a residential standpoint, higher density is less of a student generator than low-density. The crime in the apartment stuff, I mean, that's rubbed me wrong ever since I've been on this council. We had that discussion back on Tryon Place and some others. I mean, when I first moved to Cary, I moved into an apartment and I was darn glad it was there. If you're talking subsidized housing or Section 8, okay, maybe you have an argument. But it's just that all apartment dwellers are kind of sometimes lumped in with that. I struggle with. I don't think that's exactly what you all mean, but DOT is incredibly frustrating. I swear you can get an answer from God easier than you can get an answer from them sometimes. The railroad is worse. So, it's, sometimes we feel like we're beating our head up against a brick wall on some of these things, trying and trying to help and getting nowhere. So, I would support continuing the public hearing, give other residents a chance to come and weigh in. But I got to be honest with you, I don't know what we're going to hear differently. I mean, what new comment or new revelation is going to come about? Quite frankly, I think we're going to probably hear 10, 20 people say the exact same thing that we've heard tonight. But if that's what the council wants to do, I'm fine with that. I think it would benefit maybe all of us that the applicant has a little more time to try to meet with residents, maybe address some concerns, maybe more meet with council members, help us better understand. That's, that's my comments at this time. So, I hear what you're saying. You got valid concerns. I share some of those concerns. At the same time, I also do respect the applicant's, you know, wishes or attempt to try to craft a project that everybody can live with and under extenuating circumstances or circumstances that are somewhat beyond their control or the town's control.
Mr. Smith, before you go, I want to follow up on the crime thing. There are two programs that I think it's important to know about. I guess one's not a program, one's an organizational thing. We are divided into four districts in Cary and the job of the district captain is to get to know crime issues, concerns in the area. I heard concerns about vandalism is increasing, burglaries, all kinds of things like that. Please contact your captain and if you don't know who that is, contact the police department. If you're not hearing from anybody, just send me an email and I'll put you in touch with the right person and start a relationship. They can work on that. Now, with apartments, we've got this thing in Cary called Project Phoenix, which basically is a zero tolerance for apartment complexes and a great number of them, and I don't know what the latest number is, have this. And basically, if anyone in the apartment does any type of crime, they're out of there. And a lot of apartments are picking up on this and it's making the apartment communities safer. Those are just two things. And so, if you live near an apartment complex, ask if they're a Project Phoenix apartment complex and if they're not, talk to them and go to that captain and ask them to talk to them and see if that'll help. Anyway, those are two things about crime that may help today's existing conditions. Mr. Smith, I'm sorry to keep you waiting.
No, just going to agree with some of the points that Don made. I respect the fact of having a continuation. You know, one of the things that we always appeal for is not to be repetitive. We appeal, I'm not sure, I think there's something about the power of hearing the same thing 20, 30 times, it affects your decision. If those folks have a tremendous desire, I understand that. We have one meeting in November, we have one meeting in December, they're packed to the gills. If there's new information, it can be brought up at Public Speaks Out. I'd rather see the time spent in a fruitful way with the developer and the neighborhoods to see if there's something to work out. I just think we have to be realistic about requesting the continuance versus the good that we'll get out of that if there is anything else. And again, as Mr. Don said, you know, I concur with the wishes of the council, but I think we ought to set the expectations. I think we've heard, you know, most of the issues.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah, I want to thank all the speakers tonight. I learned a lot. There were a lot of nuances that came out in your remarks about that part of town that I really was not aware of, even though I don't live too far away from there. One thing I did not learn tonight, because I knew it already, is that apartments, more apartments are not real popular with a lot of Cary residents right now. We hear that time and time again. So, it's a, it's kind of a tough sell here. But I certainly understand why Mr. Carpenter is proposing this and Ms. Top, you know, was very eloquent in her remarks as well. And I keep coming back to the part that this new proposal is less dense than the one that's previously, you know, on paper. And I can't get that out of my head. So, it is a struggle. I would support continuing it because I, continuing the hearing because I could maybe learn more, think more about it and it would give more time for the applicant to work with the, with the neighbors. So, I know we don't have a motion yet on the floor to support, but I would support that if there were such a thing.
Okay. Next.
I was just going to ask for a couple, well, try to make a couple of points of clarification. One about affordable housing. All of our staff reports include a part about affordable housing. And the goal in Cary is to have a mix of housing stocks. So, affordable housing is not synonymous with subsidized housing. We know that and I think it's important for our citizens to know that. It's definitely less expensive than a mortgage on a home, I understand, but it's not subsidized housing. So, that's important to know. The other is, I thought I heard the first speaker say, and I apologize if I heard this incorrectly, but that we should not be changing our land use plan. This is not a change to the comprehensive plan. This is a rezoning. So, the land use is not being proposed to be changed by the applicant. That's important, I think, to clarify. And I support continuing the public hearing for this reason, that it's about the citizens' desire to be heard versus our sense that maybe we've heard it before. I think there's a lot to be said. I know we all support that. So, at any time, if you'd like a motion, Mayor, I'd be happy to make it.
Ms. Robinson, would you like to make that motion? You brought it up.
Go ahead. Seriously, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think you make a good point and I'm glad you said that.
Yeah, I think it's a very valid point, especially given the fact that the applicant and the residents both want, I mean, both sides of the issue would like to have the continuance. I think it underscores the value of doing it. So, I would make a motion that we continue this public hearing to our next meeting.
Second.
Okay, and with that, I just want to say-
Motion, second discussion.
Yes. I would like to just ask everybody not to repeat themselves. If you have friends that are coming to the next meeting to speak, please encourage them to read through what has been said today so that we don't have a repeat of this. We want new information. We want people to have a good opportunity to express their concerns, but if your neighborhood has already been represented, you may certainly come back and speak again, but I would encourage you not to repeat the same remarks. We will not forget your remarks within the next two weeks.
And one powerful thing I've seen and we've seen is having a representative speak for all of them and then everybody stand up showing support for that speaker, without applause, of course. But that's very powerful as well and that's another way to do it, but you're free to do whatever you'd like.
Yeah, and let me just say really fast before we leave this topic, I'm sorry. I did want to mention, I think it was maybe perhaps, I forget, someone who lives in the Meadows about the speed limit. We've, this council has looked at the speed limit on Morrisville Parkway within the last year and the majority of the council decided that it would be best to keep it at the present speed limit. So, that was actually a fairly recent decision and we may want to go back and look at that again, but-
Well, we just did it four months ago and the state-
Yeah, probably wouldn't be for a little while.
Yeah, Carolina DOT actually-
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Jensen will correct me if I'm wrong, or Mr. Bailey, actually recommended that we keep it at 45, even though the other side is 35, but as we brought it forward.
And then the other thing I want to mention is, because we haven't actually had a pressing issue with this in recent years, but going back 10 to 12 years when our schools were grossly overcrowded and we tried to make changes in the way- were grossly overcrowded and we tried to make changes in the way that the town does business to accommodate the concerns at the school level, we did bump up against some legal restrictions on what we're allowed to do for schools. So it does make it very difficult, but we are hearing what you have to say when you talk about the pressure on the schools, and that's, I really see that mounting significantly at this time. So we hear you, we just have limited ability to address some of these concerns.
Okay. There is a motion and a second, and we've had discussion on tabling or continuing this public hearing until our next meeting, which is in November-
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. Anything else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Granite. We now move to our fourth public hearing, item E4. It's a hearing on the Land Development Ordinance Amendments. Ms. Fearman of our staff, we sent a staff report. We're gonna open the public hearing, and council will not take action on this tonight. We'll refer to our planning and zoning board. Ms. Fearman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the public hearing on the Round 27 Amendments to the Land Development Ordinance. This is a list of the seven items that you'll be hearing tonight. Background information and the proposed text for each of these is provided in your staff report. Now we'll go over each of them separately. Item A provides more housing options in the downtown area. Currently, new detached dwellings are not permitted in the HMXD or the high-density or high-intensity mixed-use sub-districts of the town center. We've made some proposed changes in response to requests received from two property owners. These changes would allow new detached residential uses in the HMXD districts in limited circumstances. It would be only in the down, within the portion of HMXD that's within the downtown historic district, would only be approved with a special use permit requirement. And in the event that the building or property was designated as a landmark property, then there would be a certificate of appropriateness from Wake County Historic Preservation Commission required in order to obtain approval of the special use permit. Also, in the specifics of the amendment would add a new term, detached multifamily, as a new use in the permitted use table. And this would allow three or more detached dwellings on a single lot with the dwelling units in common ownership or in a common form of condominium form of ownership. And this would be, could be an alternative to actually subdividing the property, which is a scenario in some cases that a resident may like to pursue. Another change would allow creation of flag lots in the downtown historic district if that was needed to enable the subdivision of a lot containing contributing structures in the district. In the downtown area, the lots may be small and then with limitations with the location of structures, that would provide some flexibility that could allow some subdivision of property to create an additional lot. This shows the boundary of the historic district within the downtown. That boundary is shown in pink, and the parcels that you see in the brownish or type color are the properties that are in the HMXD sub-district. So that would be the subset of properties where these provisions could be applicable if the amendment is approved. Item B addresses density limits for life care facilities. This was also an amendment that was proposed through the development community. Existing provisions related to our life care facilities provide for all units within the facility, and that includes independent living, assisted living, or nursing home units, for example. They would be counted the same as detached dwellings when calculating density. Under the proposed amendment, in non-residential zoning district, these units, when located within a building that contained three or more units, could be counted as a half dwelling unit for the purpose of calculating density. This table shows where life care facilities are currently allowed and the associated maximum densities that go with that. The proposed amendment applies in the Office Institutional and Office Research and Development District, which are the non-residential districts where life care is allowed. Currently, the density limit there is twelve units per acre. If this change were approved, then in, within those districts, you could look at higher densities depending, taking into account the types of units. And this chart just shows by comparison that this approach is consistent with the approach used in other jurisdictions. This shows how Raleigh and Durham address this issue, where it's also recognized that individual units within these types of facilities are really different from single-family residences and have a different form of impact that's reflected in calculating those numbers. Item C would implement the town's authority to publish notices for public hearings on its website instead of in the newspaper. These changes include amendments to various sections of the Land Development Ordinance as well as to the Town Code and the Town Charter. And I would point out that the requirements that we have for posting signs on properties and sending letters to property owners within four hundred feet of affected properties, all those provisions would stay in place and would not be affected. Item D would bring the LDO into compliance with new law requiring local governments to approve eligible facilities requests to co-locate on existing telecommunication towers. The eligible facilities that this refers to are those which would increase, or changes which would increase the tower height by no more than ten percent, would add an antenna or other appurtenance to a tower that protrudes less than twenty feet from the structure of the tower itself, and also would not increase the area of any existing equipment compound associated with the tower by more than twenty-five hundred square feet. Item E addresses removal and replacement of champion trees. As currently defined in the LDO, champion trees are defined based on the, relate to the value based on the species, size, age, or other professional criteria for the tree. There's a specific criteria for upper-story trees based on a size of thirty inches or more in diameter of breast height, and the sizes may vary for the smaller under-story trees based on the species. Under the proposed amendment, the planning director could approve removal of champion trees during the development process if the tree is dead, damaged, or not typical of its species through some damage of the tree. This would be determined by a certified arborist. The other criteria could be if more than twenty-five percent of the critical root zone is impacted by development aspects that include required road connections, placement of utility lines, the need to grade area for stormwater treatment devices in areas that are topographically appropriate for that use, and where placement of buildings is, would be in locations that are necessary to meet required site design standards, for example, if the standards in an area call for the building to be located close to the street. Other requests could be approved by town council through the quasi-judicial hearing process as a minor modification. An additional change would be to clarify some of the wording related to agreements that guarantee the survival and health of replacement trees during the establishment period when trees, replacement trees are used to replace any champion trees that are Item F would provide a more flexible building envelope in the R8 zoning district. Currently, the minimum side yard setback in R8 is ten feet. We did have a request by a developer to reduce the minimum setback to seven feet while maintaining a twenty-foot combined setback for both sides. The purpose of this was to accommodate more side-loaded garages, and basically it would allow the building envelope to remain the same size but to shift on the lot so that it could accommodate more flexibility in development. In the background information in the staff report, we did mention concerns with enforcement, but based on additional review of that, we no longer have those concerns. And in fact, staff recommends a minimum setback of five feet and an aggregate, with maintaining the aggregate setback of twenty feet, as this is the same requirement that we now apply to lots in the conservation subdivisions. And again, this just provides flexibility in the building location and design to shift the location within the lot, but it would not increase any intensity or density of the development. And this is an example. This graphic shows the existing setbacks for R8, and you can see potential building location within the building envelope and driveway presumably coming into the, a front-loaded garage. This is an example to illustrating what we would hope to allow with this change, where the building envelopes could be shifted so that side-loaded garage could be developed more easily, where the driveway could extend into the setback. I'd also point out on this slide, we're showing seven-foot minimum setback here, and based on the staff's recommendation, we're proposing that that actually be shifted from, rather than seven feet and thirteen feet, just to be five feet and fifteen feet, to be consistent with other standards that we have now. And finally, the last item includes some minor changes and corrections to implement new law related to quasi-judicial hearings, and these are just some minor changes that were inadvertently left out when this issue was brought to you as part of Round 26, I believe, which looked at a number of these issues to come into compliance with some changes with state regulations related to Board of Adjustment procedural provisions. So that concludes staff's comments. At this point, we do recommend, following the public hearing, that you refer this, these sets of amendments to the Planning and Zoning Board for the recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Fearman. This time, I'll open up the public hearing for the Land Development Ordinance Amendments, and I would invite the first speaker forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thanks for your time tonight. My name's Bob Zumwalt, and I'm a registered landscape architect. I'm Director of Planning Design at McAdams, and I'm a Cary resident. I live at 4137 Enfield Ridge Drive in Cary. As you may be aware, McAdams has provided land planning and engineering expertise on a lot of premier projects in the Triangle, such as North Hills, Streets at South Point, and Meadowmont and Chapel Hill. And as a designer, I work within the confines of the ordinances in all the jurisdictions in the area, and these ordinances can either encourage good creative design or they can hinder it. Often, the best intentions result in some unintended consequences. To my knowledge, the current champion tree ordinance before you, tonight, before it's amended, if it is, is the most stringent in the Triangle. Consider the following. In Durham and Apex, there's no champion tree ordinance. There are requirements to save groupings of trees, percentages of the site, but that's left up to the discretion of the designer as to where it works best to create a good design for the community. In Raleigh, there is a heritage tree inventory, but every tree in the city is mapped, so you know where they are to start with. There's also a requirement to conserve a certain amount of tree coverage area, but is prescribed in buffers or along streetscapes. So again, it's predictable. In Chapel Hill and Carboro, there are specimetry ordinances, but the way it works there is you design the project to best maximize as much of the specimen trees as you can, but if it comes an unreasonable burden on the development, there are alternative ways to comply by working with staff and revegetation, things like that. So as you can see, what they all have in common is there's flexibility to allow development while maximizing preservation of existing significant trees. In my opinion, a champion tree ordinance should not be just a one-size-fits-all blanket statement of a certain number, no matter what the size is. An ordinance like this will have significant negative impacts on growth in Cary. I believe the current ordinance would have the following implications on Cary. Sound, sustainable design principles will be sacrificed to preserve alone trees such as a gum or a pine. In more established parts of Cary, such as the downtown, redevelopment efforts will be much more difficult. A development of a large office park, such as a Weston that holds MetLife with about twelve-hundred jobs, would be impossible. Development of parks, schools, greenways, all more costly and more difficult to plan. Cost of due diligence on a piece of property, a typical sketch that I do costs about five hundred dollars. You might need a five or ten thousand dollar specimetry survey before you can even do the sketch to know what you really have on a piece of property. In a nutshell, I think what's gonna happen is you're gonna see a reduction in lots, and you're gonna see a lot more townhomes to make up density, and I think all that translates to higher-priced housing in Cary. So as a designer and a resident, I would just ask that you consider this amendment because it allows greater flexibility when it comes to the preservation of champion trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tom Anhut. I am the Division President for Ashen Woods Homes here in town. I am a very proud resident of Cary. I live at 610 Presidents' Walk Lane in Carpenter Village, and I've been here for fourteen years. Ashen Woods Homes is a private builder. We currently have two hundred home sites, approximately two hundred home sites, either under approval or development in Cary. In the fourteen years that I've been here, I've been involved in some of the best residential development in the area, including Camden Forest, Preston, Preston Village, Somerset, Old Carpenter, and a couple of communities at Green Level Crossing. All of these are beautiful communities, and every single one of them could not have been built under the existing or the proposed ordinance. I want to give you tonight an example of what this ordinance is going to do to my company and a project that we are currently working on. In September of 2012, we contracted for the Jones Family Farm, which is located at, right near Kildare Farm Road and 1010 Road. We had several neighborhood meetings, excuse me, we came to agreements with the neighborhoods around us, actually committed funds to get their support, to move forward with the projects. We went through rezoning, we went through a comp-planned amendment, we had numerous and numerous meetings with staff about this project. In September of this year, we turned in the CDs for the project, and soon thereafter, we received the comments back from staff, and we turned in our first resubmital for the project. And at that time, we had committed over four hundred thousand dollars in cost towards this project. Most importantly, we closed on the land. We were far enough along in the process that we felt comfortable enough that what we had was secure. We had dealt with the staff so many times, we had already turned in our construction drawings, we'd already received comments back on those construction drawings. And then, when we turned in the second submittal, we learned of a change to the tree ordinance in the town. And the submittal that I currently, or the project that we currently have submitted with the town is no longer viable. It just can't be built. So under the new or the existing ordinance, we have to go back to the drawing board. So I just don't think that this is right. I don't think it's fair. We worked very closely with the town, we worked extremely closely with the neighbors. We thought that we had a viable, financially viable, community project that a lot of people supported, and particularly the town. And now we learn that we cannot move forward as we had planned. So I just wanted to give you a concrete example of what this ordinance can mean and what it certainly means to my company. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, I'm Lacy Reeves, 150 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh, and I will be very brief. I have corresponded- I have corresponded with each of you and with Ms. Simpson, as well as the staff, and I have proposed a, what I submit is a fine-tuning modification of the ordinance that is before you. As you know, what has been proposed and what is under discussion tonight includes provisions that deal with dead, dying, and diseased trees, and trees that will be impacted, the critical root zone will be impacted to the extent of 25% by unavoidable events that are going to occur during the construction process. And in those circumstances, the planning director is authorized to analyze the situation, and, under the proper circumstances, if the elements of the ordinance are met, authorize the removal of a champion tree. What the ordinance does not, or what the draft ordinance does not address, is a circumstance that's already occurred that is outside the control of a property owner. For example, if a new road has been built, or a road widened by a public authority, or sidewalks installed, that infrastructure improvement could well have impacted more than 25% of the critical root zone of a champion tree on the owner's property. If it occurred seven, eight years ago, it's very likely that the result of that impact is manifested in deterioration of the tree, and under the draft of the ordinance that's before you. In that circumstance, the owner or a potential developer can take evidence of that deterioration to the planning director and possibly obtain authority to remove the tree. Now, if that infrastructure improvement is fairly recent, if it occurred, let's say, only within the last couple of years, and the critical root zone, more than 25% of the critical root zone, has been impacted, the tree is in bad shape, but as I've heard arborists say, it just hasn't realized it yet. So the detriment to the tree is not manifested in visible condition of the tree. I would ask that the ordinance before you be fine-tuned to deal with the circumstance I just described, where an infrastructure improvement has occurred, more than 25% of the critical root zone of a champion tree has been impacted, and the owner then comes forward with a proposal to do something with its property. And in that circumstance, I would ask that, as with a prospective infrastructure improvement, which is now dealt with in the ordinance, the owner be allowed to approach the planning director and seek authorization to remove the champion tree. So I've proposed, we've proposed a minor, what we believe is a minor modification to the draft ordinance. We've provided you, staff, and the town attorney a copy, and we would submit that our proposal doesn't change the policy behind what is before you, but would fine-tune that policy to allow a very specific circumstance to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron, 112 Coat Ridge Circle here in Cary. As you all know, I'm a land use attorney by trade, not here tonight representing any of my clients, particularly although I've heard from a number of them who are concerned with the existing ordinance as well as the proposed ordinance. I'm here as a concerned Cary resident. First, I want to applaud the decision to move forward with a change to the existing ordinance, the existing ordinance which was apparently adopted back in June. Prohibits absolutely removal of champion trees, which is incredibly onerous on landowners, and I think ultimately not in the best interests of the town or its citizens. The proposed ordinance, I've got some initial concerns with, and ultimately, I'm going to suggest that the council authorize the staff to have a meeting with stakeholders to kind of ferret some of these issues out and look into some of the particular components of the ordinance and how they're going to impact development of property. But the proposed ordinance will essentially, if you come across a tree that doesn't meet one of the requirements, it's going to have to come back to you all. Much like happened with the APFO and concerns about inundating council with site plan requests for approvals of subdivisions or office parks or shopping centers, ultimately, I think what is before you tonight, if it gets approved, you all will be inundated with requests for site plan approvals, only because there happens to be a tree that's 30 inches in diameter that's impacted by what they want to do. I don't think that's the best use of the town's resources. I don't think that's the best use of the town council's time, and quite frankly, I think there is a way to come up with an ordinance that will empower the staff to make meaningful decisions that are in everybody's best interest. So with that said, what I would do again is request that the town council authorize the staff within the next two weeks to conduct a stakeholders' meeting to include developers, interested parties, interested citizens, and kind of put these issues on the table and say, okay, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense, and let's figure out something that the town can apply on a case-by-case basis that provides some flexibility in development design, but also allows for development to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, my name is Tim Minton. I'm the Executive Vice President for the Home Builders Association of Raleigh-Wake County. And as I was sitting here tonight, I was recalling the last time that I had the opportunity to speak before this group, and the last time I came here was about three years ago, and I was actually excited that there was a member of the public here complaining about growth, because it was the first time I'd heard the word "growth" in about three years. It was nice to do that. And I am happy to say that the market is a little better now than it was three years ago. The market is a lot fragile now. We still have a long ways to go. Just to give you a couple of brief numbers, just to let you know, and these are the numbers that just came out of Wake County today. When you look at permits pulled in Wake County this year, our members, our industry, is up to $1 billion in terms of permits pulled in Wake County. And so the economic impact for that is huge. In Cary, it's about $158 million, and when you add commercial altogether, it's about $230 million to Cary this year. So we're very excited about the possibilities of where we might be going here in the future. But as we move forward and as the economy slowly slugs forward, one of the challenges that we face is when there are changes made in the process in terms of development, to try to make sure that we look at the entire picture, to make sure, that we try to accomplish all the goals that everyone's trying to accomplish. Clearly, with the change in the LDO, there clearly was an issue out there that needed to be resolved, and we are here to offer our help to try to resolve that issue. We appreciate what the council, in terms of what they're considering now. This is clearly a much better solution than it was currently on the books, but we would also make the same request if we could get everyone together. Give us about 30 days to see if we can come up with something that makes sense, that handles the citizens' concerns, but also makes it possible in terms of being able to build the quality of life that you expect here in the town of Cary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of town council. My name is Michael Birch. I'm here on behalf of the Triangle Community Coalition. As some of you may know, the Triangle Community Coalition is made up of members and individuals and companies who are in the general business and real estate industry, and it is the TCC's mission to promote balanced approaches to the policy and regulatory matters that are facing our members in the Triangle. And so tonight, I'm here on behalf of many of our members who are owners of property or who are actively developing property, or who are looking at actively developing property in the town of Cary. And as you've heard from others, there is a great need to revisit the ordinance that was adopted in June, and for the reasons that have already been discussed by others, we think there is still a lot of work to be done to the proposed amendment that is before you tonight. And we think that additional work can result in a more balanced, reasonable, and a predictable process. We still think there's a lot of discretion and a lot of uncertainty in the current proposal. So to that end, we just echo the recommendations of Mr. Barron and Mr. Minton, that the town council authorize and encourage staff to convene a stakeholder meeting in the next two weeks. And it seems like there's a lot of people who are ready, willing, and able to join that task force, including folks from the Triangle Community Coalition. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else? See no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I think, A through J, one by one?
Sure. Go for them all? I didn't know, I don't think there's, I didn't think there's, okay.
That's a good idea.
We don't have any.
All right. So if you could put them up on the slide, that would help me, since I have a different agenda I'm looking at than everyone else. Thank you. Downtown housing options, comments, questions?
Funny thing you should ask? Yeah, I don't support this change whatsoever. I just think allowing these additional housing options, as they're called in the historic district, threatens the integrity of our entire downtown historic district. I understand the safeguard is built in by the fact that it's going to be a special use, as opposed to just putting an ordinance on the books, period. And that's a good thing. I just can't imagine me voting in favor of any special use that comes along, though, so to me, maybe it's a waste of time, but I understand that's built in as a safeguard. And the other part of this is if there's a landmark designation on a piece of property, that's another safeguard. If there's a landmark designation, then a certificate of appropriateness is needed by the Wake County Historic, and that's a good thing. But there are very few landmarks, landmark properties. As it turns out, one of the two who are requesting this happens to be a landmark property. But by and large, there are very few landmark properties, and I hold that the other historic properties in town, whether they're designated as landmarks or not, are just as important, in my opinion. And there would be no certificate of appropriateness needed in those cases. In fact, I'd like to see more landmark properties in Cary. I think there's a lot of potential there that we don't have. Very informal conversations with, and I stress informal because there's no decision been made or nothing formal with the Wake County Historic Preservation Commission, but informal conversations, and have only been conversations, indicate that the landmark status of one of these properties could very well be in jeopardy. Could, I stress could, might, you know, nothing for sure, but there's a chance that the landmark designation would be in jeopardy if this went through. Of course, the ordinance goes through, it comes to a special use, and if we felt the landmark would be jeopardized, we could vote no. I understand all that. But I just think doing this in the downtown historic district is a mistake.
Okay. Other comments on this particular item? Nope. We'll move to density limits for live care. Keep on moving. Public hearing notification. Telecommunication towers and antennas. And removal and replacement of champion trees. Well, I know we're going to have comments on this one.
Really?
I did? I skipped one?
No, no. He's joking. I think the recommendation to have a stakeholder meeting is excellent. Let's use the expertise that they have and help us, to help us understand what we can do that would make it predictable, but also achieve our goals.
And Ms. Spearman, is that a possibility, or is that an impossibility from staff's point?
We could certainly set up stakeholder meetings as quickly as possible. That one thing that, one thing that I would add is something you may want to consider. In preparation for this ordinance, it was intended, or looked at, as an interim ordinance. We're trying to get something quickly to try to address some of the immediate situations that are arising because of the changes that were made previously. And I will point out that some of those changes, we realized later, were actually inadvertent changes. We were trying to correct some other aspects of the ordinance and ended up reducing some flexibility inadvertently. So the ordinance that's prepared, though perhaps not ideal, I think goes a long way towards addressing, being able to have some flexibility to look at development situations at this point in time. One thing that you could consider if, through going through meetings with stakeholders, that the time that is involved in bringing, coming together with meetings, coming up with, you know, possibilities, vetting that out, taking through that through a process to be ready to bring forward, would expand the time period to be able, you know, to get to a decision to make, at least a change that's in a positive direction. So one option would be to go on two paths, continue with that item. If there's more time that's involved, to come with the final solution, to take what we have currently and at least take that through Planning and Zoning Board and let that come back to you on the regular schedule, so that there would be some provisions in place, if that's what you wanted to do.
And that sounds like a good idea.
So you're saying, don't hold up everything else in '27? Or are you saying, go ahead and let this ordinance go through as it is, because it's still better than the old, the new?
That would be an option.
The new, old, whatever.
Right. And where we are clear of direction to continue to work with the stakeholders, and then continue to work on that and come up with something better that could be brought forward, even as a separate, through, you know, starting over with the new public hearing process, if there's not enough time to integrate that in as we're moving forward with this schedule.
So Ms. Spearman, you're advocating that we leave this in, these, this LDO amendments, because even if we're working on another process up here, it's better than what we have, and we would have an improvement. I support that. I just want to make sure that, you know, it was not our intent to make this harder. It was our intent to make, to make sure that perfectly good trees weren't cut down to accommodate an extra lot here or there. I'm all for flexibility, reasonableness, and predictability, but I think when you talk about stakeholders, you have to include an equal number of citizens, because they're the ones who already live there and surround these areas, who see their tree canopies come down. So I would speak very highly in favor of that, and I wouldn't put a time limit on it. I'd say, because you may not be able to pull everyone you need together in two weeks. I'd just say, pull together a stakeholders' meeting that has representation, not just of the development community, although that's very important, but also of citizens, some of whom may be environmentalists, I don't know.
That's what I would actually add to yours, is if we're going to do one end of the extreme, if you want to think of it that way, the developers who want to be able, and landowners who want to be able to get the maximum potential of their land, I think we also need to have somebody from, I don't know, the Sierra Club, or Environmental, or the TLC, or some organization, or an arborist.
You could just have some members of our environmental advisory board and...
I'd like to see somebody...
But I'd also like to have some rank-and-file, well-known, ranked-house citizens.
Absolutely. I'm just adding to the...
We did this when we did our tree preservation task force, and we just said to our staff, go ahead and get a balanced group of stakeholders, and they did it, and that group was a great composition of people.
Balances the world.
Came up with some good solutions.
Exactly.
Balance is important. I mean, I've seen stakeholders groups that are not balanced in the past as well, so...
And just because I think it would be helpful at this point, I was really intrigued with, was the first speaker, I'm sure I got his name wrong, I put Zenwald, but, who spoke about the inventory that Raleigh does, so that everybody kind of knows where these really important trees are, so it's just kind of a parking lot idea. And the other is, Ms. Spearman, can you, or anybody else, tell us the difference between a specimen tree and a champion tree? I see Kevin behind.
I would need to have, prefer to Kevin on that.
Here comes a cavalry.
Good evening. Specimen tree is defined as a tree 18 inches and larger. They're identified on tree surveys across an entire site. However, the only thing the ordinance specifically protects, as you read, is a champion tree, which is anything right now 30 inches and larger. It encourages preservation of specimen trees.
So going to specimen trees is less restrictive. Interesting. Hmm. Okay, thanks. Appreciate that. Quick lesson.
Mr. Smith. Anyone else? Mr. French?
I would echo Ms. Robinson's, Ms. Adcox's comments. I would like the stakeholder groups to, well, since you all came to our meeting tonight, I would definitely like us to include you on it, so, but then an equal number of citizens and maybe our, and some folks from our environmental advisory board and such. I would, however, would want to put a timeline on this. Maybe not two weeks, but maybe a month.
How does "as soon as possible" hit you?
Well, I mean, it's as soon as possible for somebody six months from now.
I don't, I think our intent is not to drag this out.
I just, I hate to leave it open-ended. So I would, I would...
I could go within a month. I just think two weeks makes me a little nervous.
Yeah, that's a little...
We might not get who we need at the table.
Ms. Spearman, tell us what she thinks.
Is that within a month for meeting, for setting up a stakeholder? Is that within a month for meeting, for setting up a stakeholders' meeting?
Yes.
Is that, I think we could...
A month to set it up, or a month to hold it?
To have it.
It's two different things.
Have it.
Without looking at schedules for the stakeholders, I mean, we could, I think we could certainly...
I think the stakeholders would probably clear their calendars to probably show up.
I think, I don't think it's a problem to, to set up, to have the meeting. I think the issues and with having sort of a two-pronged approach with this are more related to the time that it takes to, to have the meeting. Sometimes, I would assume more than one meeting would be involved, to work through that process, to be able to get something back to you. And I'm, I'm sure everyone would be interested in getting that back as quickly as possible as well, even if it's starting over with a new, new public hearing. I would also point out in the comments that I made, that there were some, some of the comments that made, particularly, Mr. Reeves had made some comments where there were some specific language, and there's some of those aspects that we could, could look at as this moves forward, to take some of, some of the changes into account, that we could try to incorporate into this round, at least for you to be able to consider.
He was the gentleman who spoke to fine tuning about the impending failure due to infrastructure improvements, right? I thought that made a lot of sense.
May I, I just want to make sure we are on track with this group, and make sure we've got clear direction about the composition. So, what I'm hearing is the, potentially, the people that spoke tonight, as well as, I guess, three or four members of the journals.
The number I heard was an equal number of.
An equal number of, okay. That's why I wanted to ask the question, and make sure we're all on the same page. And I heard some mention about the environmental advisory board.
Well, that was a place to tap.
That would be included. It's a place you could tap into, citizens that are...
Those are board of our...
There are members who are experts in this area on the board.
Okay, so...
I think that would help provide balance.
And then I heard some people from the task force. I'm just, I'm just trying to get clarification, just...
I just use an example, yeah. I mean, I, there were people today that would, that spoke during the apartment discussion that might be good candidates to just tap into if you need some names. I'm going to just go back to the last four meetings and pick a couple of citizens at random that have spoken.
Sure.
There are obviously people who are concerned.
I've got some emails I responded to about champion trees.
Certainly, any of the citizens who've written us in the last year complaining about the number of trees that we've cut down. There you go.
Yeah, I've got that, I just want to make sure.
I can pull up some emails for you, too.
I think we have it. I just want to make sure it's really clear, so we meet your expectations. So, equal number of the people that spoke, and equal number of people that are citizens, or environmental advisory board, or the task force. So, just make sure we have that.
Just to be clear, I don't think you were recommending people from the task force. You were using that as an, as an example of what had been done before.
We have Robert Barton.
We have the arborist that served. Yeah, they could, they could have served on that. You don't have to be limited to using people from that, but you certainly could tap into them.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything else on the champion tree?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that, as you said earlier, I think the intent was honorable. I thought we were just trying to clean it up and make it clear. And I was surprised at, at the outcry, but I think that's a good thing. I mean, you know, people are paying attention, and they want to be involved, and I think that's good. And, and I mean, I really think this is the right idea, to get people in the room. Because we're not trying to create something that creates a problem. What we're trying to do is make sure that we, you know, we hold the standards that we have in Cary, and have everybody working together on. So, you know, I'm glad that you're having the group get together, and that it's a broad-based base group. And I think it's important to have those entities up here tonight be a critical part of that.
Okay. Anything else?
You don't need a motion on that, do you, Mayor? I mean, just direction is sufficient? Because I wouldn't...
The way I understand it right now, we've got a couple more items to go through, is this is one of the Planning and Zoning Board. In the meantime, we directed staff to set up a, a meeting of stakeholders. So, building setbacks, comments?
I have a question for staff. If a project is R8, can the lots be any smaller than 8,000 square feet? Or is that kind of like the minimum size that they can be unless, unless they get a waiver?
The minimum lot size in the R8 district is 8,000 square feet.
Fixed, like you can't go any below 8,000?
I don't believe in that district that a conserva, that a, unless a, is a cluster subdivision? That would be the, the minimum. The other possibility could be if a cluster subdivision was allowed, but that's not applicable in the R8 district. So, that would be the minimum.
Okay, is that right? Okay. Okay, all right. Okay. Any questions?
Anything else on that one? And the last one, review procedures, technical corrections, any review of the review?
I'm looking at you.
No, sir. Your copywriter couldn't find any problem.
Okay. As I said, this will go to our Planning and Zoning Board. We have any ideas, since I guess some of these items are time-critical?
This would go to the P&amp;Z work session next month.
Okay.
And then to the regular P&amp;Z meeting in December, and hopefully back to you in January.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. Spearman. Now move to old and new business. We're at item G1, council initiator request. Ms. Bush will explain the request.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all remember, we discussed at a recent meeting in, about the community appearance manual, and we talked about painting the brick. And as you all may also remember, there were three options on the table for us to consider, and A, B, and C. And at the last moment, Mr. Mayor, you came up with what I thought at that point was a brilliant, yet you didn't vote for it, fourth option.
Wouldn't that be...
Which was whether or not we could consider some type of other process, such as a special use for determining whether or not, there was another way to consider if there was a, painting the brick was appropriate or not. At that time, I think that we were all under the contention that that wasn't a process that could, we could really employ.
Right, because it's not a use.
Because it's not a use. And since it, I'm not asking us to relook at our decision, but rather to look at what other procedures there might be able, we might be able to consider, so...
To accomplish.
To accomplish, you know, another option, perhaps. And so, I was looking to, to bring this up and ask staff to investigate whether that option for a special use, maybe not a special use, but some other permitting way that we might be able to permit painting in masonry, when, when it might be deemed necessary.
Co-sponsored, do you have anything to add?
I would just add that we were, our thinking at the time was, we wish there was some way to look at this on a case-by-case basis. And I think that's what we're asking staff to do. Is there any way to look at questions like this on a case-by-case basis, such that it's not a, a one-size-fits-all ordinance?
Okay.
That was a great, I wish I said that.
That's what you want from your second, Ms. Spearman.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, to direct staff to investigate a process by which we can review on a case-by-case basis. Discussion?
Well, we're asking, are we asking, is, is there a legal opinion? Is that what we're looking for?
I mean, I would imagine that would be part of the staff report.
To me, we've answered the questions, and we're just opening Pandora's box here to, for a whole bunch of other options, eh? There's neat stuff in that box, though.
I think we wanted to know, you know, we had three options before us. Let everybody paint a building, don't let anybody paint a building, let them paint half the building. We thought maybe there were some other options. We want to know.
Okay. Any other questions coming?
Well, I would support the, the motion reluctantly, but I'd be interested to hear what staff comes back with.
Okay. There's a motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You oppose?
No.
Motion carries six to one. And that's all we have on the agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Visit the Town of Cary website, latonofcary.org.